Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 7 meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of all the exits around the room in case we have to rush out of them for whatever reason. And I'll join me as we salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, we have two new public hearings. The first is for Nichols Oxygen. Are the applicants here? Mr. Nichols, you're here.
My engineer is not here. I've got another one coming.
And that's okay.
Can you move the microphone down?
How's that?
So this application is for site plan and special use permit approval at 1564 Route 9G. Mr. Nichols is proposing to take some currently empty buildings and fill them with auto sales and auto repair. There will also be some addition of cars in the exterior to show for sales. Since our last meeting, we heard from Dutchess County Planning, their response suggested consolidating the curb cuts, as Mr. Sotera, our engineer, discussed last time. We don't have a response from New York State Department of Transportation yet, and the fire department replied that it was okay with the layout as proposed. I'll just make two quick notes, and I'll send this to Mr. Terims, Mr. Nichols. First, the rear equipment storage area should be included in the scale calculation. He left that out. And then he has on there that it's 145 percent increase in scale. It's a 45 percent increase in scale, not 145, because we couldn't authorize that. So I'll make sure Paul corrects those. Comments, Ms. Axelsson?
Well, we received a submittal that addressed a lot of comments. We still have some, we need some clarification about scale and zoning issues. We've also recommended that the existing Y-shaped entrance should be consolidated to one curb cut. Dutchess County pretty much recommended the same thing. Let's see. And we suggested landscaping, maybe just something as simple as lawn for the reclaimed second driveway. Some clarifications about pine trees on the side that appear to be a buffer, but they're not on the property. Some labeling of buildings so that we can get a little more clear on the scale calculations. And, let's see. I think those are the biggies.
Thank you. Just a reminder, the pine trees that are shown along the property line happening at the other property are not required. There's no buffering required because it's commercial to commercial. There's no residential next door. Ms. Sotera, any comments?
The only thing, I had sent Chuck Walters from the DOT a copy of the site plan, and I asked him just, you know, to look at it to see if they wanted to do anything with the entrances. I saw Chuck today at a meeting. He said he hadn't had a chance yet to look at it, but he was hoping to get to it by the end of the week and respond by email.
Thank you. Ms. Paul, do you have any comments?
No comments.
Ms. Weiser?
I have no comment.
Ms. Wasser?
I just had a quick comment in case I missed it somewhere in the, I'm not sure who I'm actually saying this to, but on the Dutchess County Department of Health, they just commented on consideration being given to investigating chemical use and disposal at the site, which for auto repair is probably a big deal.
It'll be up to the person leasing the property, and there's codes for that.
Okay.
It would meet your building codes or fire codes.
All right. That was my only comment. I'm glad to see you finding a use for the business.
Thank you, Stephanie. Ms. Dexter, I want to let you have a moment to take your breath first. Mr. Oliver.
I was just going to say, I concur with my colleagues.
Okay. There we go.
Good. You're fine.
Mr. Oliver.
I'm glad to see you're trying to get another use in there and use the building. And other than that, I have no comments. Thank you.
Ms. Napoli?
I would like to just reinforce what Liz has mentioned about recommending the existing driveway, that the one entrance be closed off for the Y shape. I think it would make it much cleaner, the lines along the way. And at the same time, also, I'm looking forward to the lighting plan that I'm sure we'll see at some point.
All right. I am personally dead against this, cutting this curb, okay, or eliminating it. It's been there since 1976. It was approved by the Department of Transportation back then. I don't know what rules have changed, but the road to the south basically is a connecting road to any property in the back, all right? And the one in the front is access to basically the main buildings. We, you know, one of the meetings here, we moved the car spacing so we could retain the curbing as is. And I thought, that's where we're still at. Just moving, driving the cars around, now you're going to have to go down the road, come back, and come over into a dead end, all right? There's no back getting out of the lot. I mean, it's worked for all these years. It's also, you know, even just for the fire department, access to the building without having to go around all the stuff. It makes sense, and I'm deadly against changing it, all right? And I don't know what my recourse is.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Well, part of this will be at the DOT as well. If they require it, we don't have any power to not make them require it.
And they've asked us, and they've asked us that when there's
As a policy.
When there's an application that comes in, if it's a change of use, that if we could just, as a courtesy, send them a copy of the plan to see if they wanted to do any updates. So it'd really be up, you know, to Chuck, and if they say it's fine, then...
I agree.
Right.
Okay, so we have to wait for that, all right?
I mean, if you want to call, if you want to call down there, talk to Chuck Walters, or...
Paul's out of town.
Right.
Would anyone out there like to speak about this application?
We need to open it.
Oh, making a motion up the public hearing.
Someone?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Would anyone like to speak on the record about this application? I think I know what you're all here for, so we should adjourn this to the May 1 meeting to allow DOT the three days to respond. So make a motion to adjourn the public hearing to May 1.
Someone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll get my two com-- yes?
Just quick clarification in my memo. I said this was an unlisted action, but it's type 2, as per the resolution last time.
So, Mr. Nichols, we'll see you back on May 1, and we should be, that will allow three days for DOT to respond, and so we'll have an answer on the curb cut.
Okay.
Otherwise, it looks like everything's okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Lumen's Holding, Sun and Farm. The applicants have proposed a solar array at 619 Salt Point Turnpike. This would be the intersection of Salt Point and South Quaker Lane.
I'll save it for...
Please. Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Someone?
Second. Yes? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Since this is the first time some of the members of the public will see this, I'm going to go ahead and let you do a song and dance about it. But I do want to go ahead and just alert those in the audience. So there's something that's called the State Environmental Quality Review Act, where we look at the quality of the environment, both prior to approval and post-approval. In these cases, if individual property owners feel affected by something wrong, SEACER doesn't really allow us to take a look at impacts to individual properties. SEACER is meant to be community-wide, which doesn't mean it has to impact the entire community, but it has to be a broad area. That noted, the applicants are also required to obtain a special use permit. The criteria for a special use permit do allow the planning, or does allow the planning board, do allow the planning board to focus in on how it affects the immediate community and the surrounding neighborhood. So anything that you want to say, please go ahead and say it. If you've already heard your comment, if you, when you're coming to speak, and you've heard somebody else say it, you don't have to repeat it. You can just say, "I agree with the comments made before." That'll help us get through the evening more quickly. Otherwise, let me turn it over to you guys. Ms. Crawford?
So, just a quick introduction. My name's Peter McAuliffe. I'm speaking on behalf of Omni Navitas, who is the developer for this project. We are working in coordination with Crawford and Associates, and Jen Crawford, Ms. Crawford here, who has been pioneering and spearheading the engineering work to put this plan together. So I'll let Jen take over.
Sure. I wanted to also introduce, we have a new guest with us, Randy Williams. A couple times before, we've indicated that this is a little more of a design-build project, which allows us to make sure that any of the designs, decisions, as we're developing the project, are cleared with the contractor ahead of time, so, you know, there's no surprises once we actually get to construction, so. Randy Williams of NCI. So we have a 2-megawatt solar array, fixed tilt, no tracking, proposed at the intersection of South Quaker Lane and Salt Point Turnpike. In our, some of our previous versions, we had an entrance coming in off of here, and we hadn't identified where the wetlands are, so we've revised the layout since the initial application for a number of things. One, to have the entrance come off of the existing residential drive to relieve potential congestion areas near the intersection. We've rearranged the array to avoid the wetlands, and although we haven't completed our latest revision based on the second comment letter, we will be revising to avoid the side yard setback, and not the rear yard setback up here. And we don't intend to go into the wetlands in that revision. We're just going to rearrange them a little bit more. And we added the, some visual screening along the west here, as well as here, and I know on the second comment letter, we'll be adding some additional screening in this corner here to protect the view shed from that direction. Some other interesting changes, oh, and then we also took the suggestion of the Hyde Park Town Board, or Town Planning Board, to use the DEC pervious gravel driveway design, which is yet another way to minimize disturbance to the site and allow existing hydrology to drain the way it always has. And we've talked about spreading pollinator-friendly seeds to help with the visual impact. You know, if there are more blooming flowers, I got the feedback that would kind of take the edge off a little bit, so we, we'll be adding that. One also thing I wanted to point out is that, so our equipment pads are in the center, and that was a very intentional thing for a number of reasons. It also, it helps us minimize costs for conductors, but it also helps make sure that any noise that is generated by the transformer is contained to the center of the array, so that, that means that anything around the perimeter, you know, you wouldn't, you really shouldn't be able to hear it, because the inverters, not that they're particularly noisy, they sound a lot like a transformer. Have you ever stood close to a transformer? But in my experience, you would never really hear them out at the edge, so that was one intentional decision, to keep the equipment pads in the center for those reasons. So that's, I think, those are the highlights, I would say.
So the inverters, the transformers are all in the center? Accessed through the center of the site?
So this is actually a string inverter project, which is a little bit different than a central inverter project. I know there was one article that was submitted that was a central inverter project. So we are using a bunch of smaller inverters that will be located along the corridor here, so those produce even less noise than a central inverter, but there would still be a transformer located on the equipment pads in the center.
And do you know what the approximate decibels that it produces are?
I would say, I can get back to you. I don't want to say something wrong.
No, no, I read today that a central inverter produces 60 dBs at about 33 feet, which is the sound of a large, like a window unit air conditioner, and that as you go further and further away, it gets down less. Also, just in advance, because there was some question about the noise it produces at night, it won't produce any noise at night because it's not taking any energy in the evening. It should be silent completely.
Correct.
Yeah. Just for frame of reference, from where those are going to be located, to the center of the road, is about 500 feet.
That's what I, we were there at the site today.
Yeah.
Ms. Napoli, Ms. Weiser, and myself. Trying to make the same determination.
Yeah.
500 from the row of inverters to the center of the road?
From this equipment pad location, again, which will be the biggest equipment that will emit the most noise, even though it's not a lot of noise, to the center of the road, South Quaker to the west, is approximately 500 feet, and to Salt Point Turnpike, the center of the road, if you go directly south, I want to say that's approximately 750 to 800 feet.
Now, what about north? What's the closest inverter to the property line?
The closest string inverter? Yes. The closest string inverter to the property line would be at least what the setback is once we do the revision, but you'll find that string inverters put...
What is that, 30?
I think, was it 50?
25.
Or, no, it got increased to higher than that, because it was a side yard.
The side yard.
Right.
It is 50, sir. I'm looking at my notes. Yes.
So 50. But you would only find string inverters up here, which are much quieter even than a central inverter, and the transformers stay to the center. So the distance to the north is...
I was, yeah, I was asking about the string inverters.
Yeah, the string inverters, yeah.
She's going to get back to us with the dBs that's for string inverters, right? Thank you. That's a good overview. If anybody has specific questions when the public is invited to speak, then we can try to answer them.
I think, I think it's, he sent over the spec, I think it's 56 decibels for the string inverters.
For each one?
56, correct.
It's three meters away. Yeah.
At three meters.
Yeah, three meters. And those are just...
Could you please speak into the microphone when you...
We're televised, and so the viewing audience can't hear you without...
Yeah, and you need to be close to it, yes.
56 decibels at three meters. And like they said, at nighttime, you don't hear it. The majority of the noise comes from cooling fans in the inverters, and you'll find that at peak hours from probably 11 to 2, when the sun's out and it's really hot, summertime, not so much in the wintertime. If the inverters are getting too hot, they'll, they'll kick on and deregulate, and then those fans will kick on and help cool. So they're, they're an on and off thing as well.
Thank you. Mr. Williams? Anything else you want to present beforehand?
I think the only, we've had some back and forth since our last meeting. I'll add that we got a no-impact letter from SHPO. And I've made some progress with the DEC, even though they sent pretty much the same response as the first time. I managed to have a really productive call with Sarah of the DEC, and she did confirm that it is their desire not to require a taking permit. They'd really just rather that we comply with the mitigation in order to avoid it. So I think the question as to whether a permit would be required in addition...
I don't think so, and I'll be honest with you.
Yeah.
Ms. Dexter and I have taken the long-form biodiversity assessment training. Even though there's presence of Lennies turtles nearby, you've got way too, you've got, there's no tree canopy whatsoever on the site.
Right.
There's too much slower penetration for them to do really anything other than maybe wander around a corner of it. That's about it.
Right.
Because they want to get back into where it's shaded too quickly, back behind it. And there's no shrub kettle pool on the side either. There's no primary habitat. It'd just be roaming habitat.
Right.
So we proposed the mitigation measures at the outset. I think those suffice.
Yep. Yeah, so we'll be getting back to them, and I think in our next submission, you'll see better detail on that.
Thank you.
I have another question.
Yes.
An issue was raised about your ag data statement. Is this property actively farmed now?
It is being used for horse pasture.
Will it continue to be used after the panels are up?
Um, do you?
Yes.
Yes.
There are guidelines for how many horses are allowed per, for the total acreage, so we'll have to take a look to make sure that these, this would no longer be allowed for horses to run three, freely through, so we'll have to make sure that there's a limit placed on what they can base, based on the deduction of this.
Mm.
And I don't remember exactly what it is. I'll have to talk to Cornell Cooperative, but they evaluate, they evaluate equine management plans.
Per thousand pounds.
It's per thousand pounds, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes. So many acres per thousand pounds of raw animal, so we'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Axelsson, any additional comments?
Well, it's nice to hear that they have their OPRHP no-impact letter about historic and archaeological. I think I reviewed with the board the comments that we had last time.
Yep, yep, you did.
So I don't think there's anything to touch on. There's more buffering to do, et cetera, but I'm sure we'll see some progress in the next submittal. And I do recommend that mitigation notes be put on there and whatever else goes with that.
Right. Yeah, and Pete and I had a good talk about the disturbance calculations and the drainage analysis, so I think, you know, we'll be good to go at the next submission.
Yep. Thank you. Ms. Sotera, any additional comments?
She updated it.
That wasn't really an update. That was more of an aside. What did you guys conclude when you talked about?
All right. Well, we just talked about, you know, their, their initial position that they were less than one acre of disturbance, and, you know, based upon my calculations and figuring in the areas, I think I came up with about 1.5 acres, and it's not that it's going to really have an, have an impact on, they've already prepared an erosion and sediment control plan, and there is, the DEC stormwater regs do say that if your pre- and post-development runoff calculations, if your post-development is less than 5% of your pre-development, then you just have to do a basic erosion control plan. So Jen is gonna, Jen is going to prepare those pre- and post-cals, and I would assume, we'll have to see, that, that it would be less than 5%. And if it is, then they would just need to do the standard erosion control plan. And Tad and I have, you know, reviewed that, and we're in agreement that that's, you know, the way to go, assuming that the pre- and post-cals jive.
Thank you. Anything else, Victoria?
No.
So before I call on the board for comments, and then I'll get to public comment, just for those in the audience, we tend to speak in acronyms up here, and I apologize if you wonder what SHPO was. That's the State Historic Preservation Officer. We've referred this over because the family dwelling dates back several hundred years, so we wanted to make sure there were no impacts from the State Historic Preservation Officer on the resource itself. And I'll try to stop speaking in acronyms and ask everyone else to define it as well. Ms. Napoli, comments?
Not at this time.
Mr. Oliver?
I'm looking forward to your next submittal before any more comments. Thank you.
Ms. Dexter?
I'm always happy to hear that there's been additional back and forth, talking with our consultants, as well as the supporting agencies, because between all of them, they help to define this project and, and exactly what needs to be done. So I'm very happy to hear there's been a lot of discussion.
Thank you.
Ms. Wasser?
Not at this time.
Ms. Weiser?
I just hope to see that the, that the screening will be sufficient so that we can maintain the rural nature of Hyde Park, because we were there today, and it's really beautiful, and I'd really like to make sure that we don't see those, those arrays from Quaker.
Yes.
Thank you. I should add for the audience that if you're not hearing comments, there's been a lot of back and forth on this application from us to the applicants and their consultants. Ms. Crawford's nodding. We've, we had a couple of pre-application meetings where this was discussed as well. So what the, what you're seeing there, the layout, has changed considerably from what was first proposed, and they have been very responsive about taking the planning board's comments into their concerns and making the changes. One last question from me. The cables that will send the energy produced over to the X Central Hudson wires, are those underground or are those overhead?
It's underground until there's a riser pole located on the side of the intermittent drainage course, and then from there over to the utility on poles, overhead.
So it'll both, it'll be buried just to some extent, and then overhead for a short amount of space? Okay.
Yeah, that amount.
Thank you. If you guys don't mind turning over seats, I'm going to start asking for public comment. And when you come up, anybody from the public who wants to speak, please just state your name and address for the record.
Randy, can you move that to the center?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Would you like us to stay here?
If you'd like to.
Yeah.
You don't, comments are addressed to the board. You don't have to answer them. Some of them, if I can't answer, I will need your assistance, and you can also see, you will have to get back to us on that. You may not have all the answers. I may not have all the answers either, so. Would anyone like to speak about this application? Come on, come on up!
Sorry, my hearing is poor audio system here that I couldn't hear all the back and forth. My name's Henry Van Brookhove.
Can you have a seat and speak into the microphone?
Tune these down. My name's Henry Van Brookhove, and I live in 21 South Quaker Lane in Hyde Park, New York. I'm the neighbor across the street. I sent you at least four different comments and so on. I don't know how much of it I should repeat, since I'm supposed to be addressing you and not for the other neighbors that are here to...
You can, you can put these, they're already all into the record because you sent them to the secretary, so they're, they're actually already part of our official record, but you can offer highlights or make any of the comments you want.
Well, I think, to go back to the original one, I think that this is the project...
Can you sit closer to the mic? Excuse me. Can you sit closer to the mic?
I think this project is in absolutely the wrong place. I think it runs counter to the legislation that was in the mind of New York State in creating all of these solar farms, these industrial arrays. They were meant to save farmers in isolated areas where they would have minimal impact. This thing's being plunked down in the middle of a community of homes. It's being plunked down, taking up a third of a very tiny farm, and I would question whether that's viable as farmland after this thing is built. And my background is probably close to 50 years now in construction and facilities maintenance and management, and I've seen fads come and go, and I think these solar arrays are a technological fad that will pass in 20 years as improved technology has replaced them with other things. We're talking about space-based collectors that would beam electricity, and all sorts of other things that are going on. And there seems to be a rush to fill Hyde Park with these things, and I've lived in Hyde Park for over 42 years, and I've seen things come and go, where we've rushed to hurry a development, where there's some imagined advantage to the town, and instead it's become a blight or a detraction ultimately, and we've rooted. I mean, look at some of the development along 9G and so on, that if we could change it today, we certainly would to make a more attractive gateway into our community. And I see what's going on here is just destroying the value of my property and that of my neighbors. Arguably, the three of us here today that live across the street have some of the nicer homes and properties on that part of South Quaker, and I'm watching my property values go down with this coming up. For what? How does Hyde Park benefit? This is not going to bring jobs to Hyde Park, as the, as the town supervisor has said. Most of these things have a traveling group of maintenance people that go from place to place to place to deal with the maintenance of them. That's not going to enhance our, it's going to destroy an agricultural district by plunking this down right in the, an industrial array right in the middle of an agricultural district, one of the last ones left in Hyde Park. And it seems like we're throwing away all the good things that would make people want to come to Hyde Park to visit and live and be part of our community. I think it's, I think it's an error, and I think that one of the reasons why we bought the house what we were was because of the rurality of this area, and I think that's shared by, by many of our neighbors. The, it's going to destroy the view shed, it's going to negatively impact the value, and I brought to you a lot of other questions. I'm concerned, just what Pete said about not increasing the drainage by 5%, but what I'm concerned is, right in the middle of the development there is a, is a bluestone ridge, and a lot of, of the status of the wetlands depends on evaporative drying before the water gets down into those wetlands. They're going to cover them with panels, and this stuff's all going to drain in there, making a, making a flooding problem at one end, and you're not going to get proper value evaporation under those panels, and it's going to change the ecological character of that land and the land around us. And I think it may wind up, because of that ridge, you're, the, you're going to wind up with more than a 5% affect when this thing gets all built, because you're basically going to re, be roofing over 10 acres of property and sending all the water into one spot. I don't know what it's going to do to the people who are already in marginal conditions on the other side of Salt Point Turnpike, because it drains from Lennie's property behind that direction, and you start all this evaporative that gets held up in that area and evaporates And you start all this evaporative that gets held up in that area and evaporates when all this gets pushed down into there, what the effect is gonna be. So I think the study on just that solar farm is not adequate to determine that because it's gonna have such a wider impact to the people that live around there in the community. The screening plan that they proposed is totally inadequate. I noticed three board members were out there today and thank you very much. And any other board members that wanna park in my turnaround, in my driveway so you can actually truth my comments that I've sent to you in those letters, please feel free to do so. If I'm wrong, I'd love to hear it and explain why, but the land drops off so severely, you'd have to put in 20, 25-foot-high trees to begin to be an effective screen because the land drops off five feet on the, from the edge of the road, goes out and then rises up about 35 feet. So that array, the angle from the road and everything, that array is not gonna be screened by what they're proposing. And the, and things like azaleas and forsythias is laughable because at full maturity, they're not even gonna come up to the height of the road grade and therefore be no screen. So you're still gonna see that gleaming array from sea to shining stone ridge in the back. You know, it's, you know, constantly a lot of questions kept. The one we discussed today was the electromotive force at 2 megawatts, and I think I heard what is potentially a solution if it's encased right to the delivery point. But I think that I was concerned about it and Mr. Dupree brought up the point that, you know, he wants to hear hard and fast case studies about it. And I agree, I mean, I would like to see evidence about the direct dangers and there are no good studies. The only studies are the blow-off ones that are done by solar farm-type companies. And there are no good government studies about long-term effects of exposure to the electromotive force of a 2-megawatt conductor in a community. I know they certainly allow, don't allow homes under the high-tension lines for that reason. I mean, you can put up a fluorescent tube and it'll light by itself from the force coming off these wires. But there is a requirement, OSHA requirement, for people that have to work around these things. And so I think it would be very handy if at least, at least, that the group certify that their equipment will at least meet this OSHA standard and that they'd be required to do a follow-up test after construction to indeed certify that the minimum safety standard that exists for this machinery. Because quite frankly, what I hear from them is fluff words. Oh, it'll be less noisy than this. Well, less doesn't count. How many decibels? At what distance are the decibels? I mean, let's have some facts on this and not feelings about how it's gonna, gonna make noise, be obtrusive, all these other things. So I disagree with some of their statements. I think I sent to you, in their agricultural data sheet, they checked that no agriculture was taking place. We know the previous owners, well, Mr. and Mrs. Palmquist have passed away, but we know daughter Irene Muntz before she moved away. And she lived down in that 1790s house when the Palmquists were first subdividing that property. And she said that the town wouldn't allow anything going on down there to disturb the wetlands in that area and because of the rock conditions down there at the time, and this was decades ago. And that traditionally, the agricultural use has been pasturage, that it's not fallow land, it's not abandoned land, it's pastureland. It always has been from time immemorial, a cattle farm or now a horse farm. And so they checked off that no agriculture was taking place and we sent you guys a photograph of horses grazing. And in fact, later in the day, there were seven horses right up against the fence on the road taking, enjoying the wetlands, the liquid in the wetlands before they headed off for more grazing. So a lot of these documents are not, to my mind, being addressed truthfully or factually to you all. And I think that, I would hope that you would ask them for hard data and the planning of this thing. And pretty soon I'll get off the soapbox, I mean, wasn't it Franklin Roosevelt that said, "Be sincere, be brief and be seated." And so I would invite other people to speak up because you've got the documents with the specific Who Shot John stuff that disturbed me about it. I would like to see better hard information from them on this thing. I would like to see this project being built someplace else where it won't be an eyesore for the community until it goes away and the equipment is removed again in however long it takes. Thank you for your time, thank you for your patience. I apologize to anybody back there that I'm boring.
No, no, thank you.
Thank you for coming out.
There were a lot of good comments in through there.
Could I, if I could just address, Henry had a question about the drainage. Henry, there is, there is a DEC guidance document that was issued specifically with regard to solar farms, as there's been more, and more of them. And how DEC feels that they should be addressed when we're evaluating storm drainage and erosion control plan versus a full stormwater pollution prevention plan. And the guidance document, if I have your email, I can even, even send it to you. But the guidance document does not...
I know you, Pete, I trust you.
Yeah, we've worked together a long time. You know, the guidance document terms these, as Jen helped me out, but they term these as not impervious because of the fact of there is space in between the panels and the ground underneath them is going to be pervious. So it's not like it's, whatever the size of this is, five acres completely impervious, that's just gonna run off. It's gonna fall off the panels onto, you know, the ground and evaporate into, you know, the ground. Now, there's gonna be some increase because of, you know, the roads, although they're gonna be gravel roads. So, so there is, there is a DEC guidance document that was specifically, you know, issued for a solar farm project, so.
Well, it wasn't just the, also like the bases that they go in and so on is all decreasing. A very small amount of perkable dirt on top of this bluestone ridge.
Yeah, I mean, that's another, that's another side, that's a side issue.
You know, that's one of those special cases that we have in Hyde Park with our wonderful ledge rock formations that run in some properties. So it gets a lot trickier than the standard run-of-the-mill, like if you were doing it on this side of Route 9 where there's a lot of glacial till.
Right.
And loose ledge material.
Yep. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that one issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
And just to clarify as well, the landscaping that's proposed, the reason why there are shrubs there is because Quaker Lane is public access, so we're trying to make sure that people driving by don't take a look at it either necessarily. So there's a mix of trees that are proposed, specifically non-deciduous or evergreen along with shrubs at the base so that there'll be staggered heights in the landscaping so that there'll still be, as I said, some sort of screening as you drive by, et cetera. It's mostly gonna be visible when we're out there today from Quaker Lane rather than, if you're coming eastbound on Salt Point, you'll be able to see it if you have a, turn your head sharply, you'll at least see the landscaping, maybe not the solar arrays. But from Quaker Lane is where it's most evident, as well as, as Mr. Van Broeckhoven said, from the properties that sit up on the west side of Quaker Lane. Would anyone else like to come and speak about this?
My name is Jody White, I reside in 15 South Quaker.
White or Weiss?
Weiss, W-E-I-S-S.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
So I don't have anywhere near Henry's background or knowledge and I'm not environmentalist.
Can you speak into the microphone?
I've adopted solar myself, so I don't oppose solar properly.
Are you the Red House?
Yes. Is that working?
Yes.
Yes.
But I did have some questions and concerns. I haven't sent any emails or letters, so nothing that I have is on record.
It's okay, you can say it tonight, it goes into the record.
Is the board aware of whether or not the developer has been in touch with Central Hudson or with NYSERDA or, you know, I tried to find these projects online, I couldn't find them online. You know, going to Henry's point about this rush for solar farms, I've spoken with people in the industry, even during the time when my install was being done. And without subscription levels, there's various projects throughout New York that get done because developers are rushing in for the state money grants, so there's a money grab. The farms get completed, then there's no subscription, they sit dormant, and you just have a farm sitting there for no good purpose. You know, there's at least, I believe, six farms being proposed in Hyde Park. I do not know how many in Rhinebeck, how many in Pleasant Valley, how many in the town of Poughkeepsie, but is anybody considering these on a countywide basis as opposed to just one farm at South Quaker?
We refer these to county planning who would have, they look at county-wide impacts.
Okay. And then the dormancy, I mean, are there, is there subscriptions for this project? Is there proof of subscriptions that have been offered? Do we know that this is gonna be fully utilized? I mean, pursuant to the code, if this goes up and it sits dormant for one year, that triggers a six-month period to take it down. I mean, do we know that there are subscriptions for this amount of power that's gonna make this a feasible project?
The governor announced, I'm not gonna quote this correctly, it's 50% renewables...
No, that's 70 by...
Oh.
It's 70 by 2030 now.
That's in the newest budget. Okay. So the governor has required that, or that the state has 70% of its energy sources be renewables by 2030?
Yes.
And so that's why you're seeing a rush to solar. You're also going to see more wind farms as well because solar can't get you there, I don't believe. You're gonna have to have other sources along that way. Right now, we don't live in an area that's really suitable for wind, except for maybe some of the ridge lines across the way, but I have a feeling you'd see a lot more people speaking against that because of the view sheds as well.
And hydroelectric also.
And hydroelectric. So that's why you're seeing this. Also, in Hyde Park, we were the first town in the county to write a law specifically about solars, so that other towns where they've had these have used their utility as use. So this is a little bit more detailed and specific and it allows, I believe, applicants to chart a clearer path forward, which is why you see somebody here. I will say straight out, this is the only one that is this visible. All the others are set back within areas, they've all, all of them have been recently cleared or were cleared already for farming. And I believe that the energy companies, when they, they think they have software, that's what I've been told, that actually looks on satellite basis, so anytime that they see an open area that seems suitable, they're gonna see if it is. The other criteria they have to follow, which is proximity to some of Central Hudson's lines, they can accept this. And I don't believe, we, I believe that they're already in touch with Central Hudson, but they can answer that question.
Yeah, I can touch on that. So that is part of this process, it's kind of the other half of getting these projects approved, is obviously making sure the utility signs off on whatever the system we ultimately interconnect is. And we have been in touch with them, you know, we will submit final drawings upon approval here, but, you know, it's been a lengthy process, probably beginning early last year. So we have been working with them. And then to touch on your subscription question, we will be doing this under Community Solar, which has the subscription model as you mentioned. So you kinda have to line that up congruently, you kinda have to make sure the timelines line up, you know, we have a third-party group that specializes in that. I can provide some more info on companies that we talk to and work with, but usually they line it up where, you know, during the construction period, they are going out and, you know, sourcing these subscriptions to make sure all the credits that are produced are allocated every month, so.
How far is your subscription area?
So we can sign a customer up if they are located in the same utility service territory. So any customer that is serviced by Central Hudson Gas and Electric can technically be part of the subscription model. Again, we do like to start, obviously, in the immediate radius where the project's located and then if we can't allocate all the credits, we move outward.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss, continue.
Sure. One question aside from my prepared questions based upon the presentation that opened this up was going to this equipment pad, I guess the part that I don't understand is if the equipment pad is going to be the noisiest source from the entire array, why is it central to the array and not to the east of the array if every residence and business is to the west of the array?
The applicants proposed it there, I think that's because of ease of getting to the site and also everything feeds into it centrally?
That's right. And, you know, we can show in our next submission that even at this distance, you shouldn't be able to hear it above ambient all the way over here without even considering the, you know, sound barrier that vegetative screening can also provide.
So I was going to say, the landscaping that we ultimately do for visual buffering will also provide sound attenuation. Last but not least, you guys who live on that side of Quaker, you're on a bluff, the sound will travel straight and then it'll go up when it hits the wall. For example, I live down on the river, I don't really hear the train stationed below me because it bounces up, but I can hear the one across from the river loud and clear because it's going straight across the river, it's already elevated, so it hits my house. I think by most people even over here can hear it from time to time. We'll be looking at the question of sound carefully, but I will also add, all the other solar applications we have, the equipment pads are always in the center.
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, we're trying to make it as efficient as possible. And so the further away you are from where you're trying to feed it, the more losses you have. So this just kind of optimizes the efficiency.
Thank you.
Has the board considered the credibility and integrity of Sky Solar, the China domiciled company that owns the developer?
That is not something we're allowed to do.
Okay, well then, for the record, I'll just note that you're considering entering into a relationship with a company that's been public, this is based on public documentation, for approximately four and a half years. They were brought public in November of 14 by a pair of third- or fourth-tier investment banks. At the outset of their public lifespan where they should be growing and booming, they're doing quite the opposite. Since the time of their initial public offering, the price of the company shares have fallen from $8 per share to less than a dollar. The overall market value of the company has fallen from nearly $450 million to less than $40 million. The company has failed to timely file certain of its regulatory reports with the Securities and Exchange Commission. The NASDAQ exchange has threatened to delist the company for failure to comply with its listing requirements. The CEO of the company has been removed for bad acts and required to reimburse the company $15 million for his ill-gotten gains. The company has burned through what appears to be from inconsistent information in their public disclosures, five CFOs, two were removed, one is recently, is January of 2019. There have been several significant lawsuits between the company and their business partners, each resulting in expensive settlements by the company. A class-action lawsuit has been filed against the company, including claims of ongoing misrepresentations and fraud. And the company has changed its public accounting firm and allegations exist regarding misrepresentations about the company's internal controls. In sum, on this point, you have to query the quality of the company and its management as well as the viability of the company and its ability to continue as a going concern for the life of the solar farm. Further, with respect to the financial viability of the company, in its public filings, the company acknowledges a limited operating history as an independent power producer, which is now how they're earning nearly all of their revenues, and that its past successes occurred in a significantly different economic and regulatory environment, that its access to financing may be limited, and that ongoing litigation may utilize a significant portion of its cash resources and divert management's attention from the day-to-day operations of the company. Doesn't sound to me like a company that's really gonna be around in 20 years to take care of whatever needs to go on, so for various different reasons, you know, I consider that to be an important fact. And suffice it to say, you know, with all of the other projects that are being proposed in Hyde Park and elsewhere, there seem to be other developers that are a better business partner for Hyde Park than Sky Solar.
We would maybe be their business partner, the owner of the site would be their business partner. That's why, so everyone knows, in the decommissioning plan that's that the town board requires, it's a three-way agreement between the site, the property owner, the operator, as well as the town, so that if the operator doesn't, can't fulfill, can't, they go dormant more than a year and they can't, then have the money to do it, then the town has the right to go in and charge us a tax lien, the cost to dismantle the site. So that's really, in other words, the person at risk really is the property owner rather than the town.
I think a decommission bond for full value and not some salvage value offsetting a bunch of ancient technology would be more appropriate.
We haven't recommended bonds because bonds have to be re-upped usually every year and the life of these is 20 years typically, that's what the leases have been so far that we've been looking at. And that's a lot actually to ask for town staff to keep up with those every year. And also the bond is only typically 10% of the total cost. There is no bond that's put up for a cash equivalent of this cost. The reason we haven't been requiring bonds is because it makes the cost of electricity go up if they have to tie up cash in hand, but I understand what your concerns are.
Yeah, I don't care about your costs, I don't care about the cost of the electric, I care about the site that's gonna be under the protection of some company that's potentially in bankruptcy, either during its operation because they don't... under the protection of some company that's potentially in bankruptcy, either during its operation because they don't sell it to investors or at the end of the period.
If this project were approved and the company has no financing, then it wouldn't be built.
Financing today.
Correct. That's basically, in other words, there's always, there's always, there's always risk involved with all of these projects. We've had projects approved before that didn't get built or that weren't ever constructed for the same reason, they couldn't find financing. Or circumstances change in the economy, tenants left there, you found someplace else.
The concern is obviously post-construction, right? You're going into a very long period of running it, maintaining it, and then decommissioning and removing it.
Then the decommissioning, again, is put up there so that there's safeguards for the town to make sure that it's done. We're not even sure that these will be decommissioned. The original solar arrays that are, I believe, in Boston are actually still working. It's not the, it's not the panel that tends to degrade quality-wise. It's the inverters, I believe, themselves, that be replaced more often.
I mean, the board does have the option of recommending a bond versus the lien, and so that's something that you should consider in this project moving forward.
We will. Anything else?
Sure. Wanted to comment on glare. I was reading through Code Section 130-8F, which states that "The solar farm and power plant panels and equipment shall be serviced designed and sighted so as not to reflect glare onto adjacent properties and roadways." As drafted, the code does not provide a caveat or an exception that permits glare, which is limited to residents that live on a hill or in a particular type of number of storied homes, or an exception for glare that only occurs during portions of the day rather than all day long. The language says not to reflect glare onto adjacent properties and roadways. It seems fairly strictly prohibitive of glare. The glare analysis report that I found online from Crawford from January the 22nd confirms to the board that the proposed site will create glare that can be a nuisance to both the east and the west. And the report further recommends not to look directly at the glare. Sounds like there's some form of a violation of the code in addition to serious safety issues for the homes and the connecting driveways coming down from the west side of South Quaker to, to the main road. Looking further to the code, I noticed 130-8D discusses landscaping or screening materials to help screen the power plant, but that's the aesthetics and that's the screening of the plant for the reasons of the view, not for particularly with respect to whether or not there's glare. The Code Section applicable to glare says it shall not glare. And even if, as Henry was saying earlier, you know, even if there was an exception for the glare, you're not able to screen it effectively because of the fact that the site is situated low and then we're up on the knoll and the glare's coming at us from that angle. I guess the other point that I had noted here was that the glare analysis report is inconclusive in certain respects in addition to that. And rather than defining or giving definitive opinions, the engineer qualifies the report with viability-limiting language such as "not expected" and "should not expect." The board, the residents, you know, we are entitled to answers, not the soft feelings. And they're being paid for their work. They should be at risk for what their conclusions are. And I don't need language that's hedging their potential liability as it should or it may. It either will or it won't. It shall or it shall not. So the glare seems to be an issue as per the report. As that leads more into my comment on the screenings, I'll try to keep this short, but essentially you've got the 138 for the glare, you've got the 130-6 on the screenings. Sorry, you've got 130-8, and then you've got 130-6 supplementally with 130-8. So the appropriate screenings are site-specific, determined large part by, by the topography of the land. The screenings applicable to each of the residents needs to be considered as part of this project. And the proposed screenings by Omni were just, in my respect, sort of deficient. It shouldn't matter if I'm enjoying the view from my front porch, from my back deck, from the far reaches of my backyard, the screening should be sufficient to screen the site, not just at the road level for people that are driving by, but from the residents, adjoining residences required, you know, by the code. It should not entail me running a line of trees that separates my front yard into a before and after. The code specifically supplemented identifies things such as berms, privacy fencing, a number of items that, you know, are not included in any of the screenings. And I understand the screenings are sort of specific to the project. But it doesn't create a situation where a developer finds a piece of land that they can then develop less expensively by just doing the bare minimum, and whether that's moving the pad to the center rather than to the east or placing trees at the road height rather than putting in some form of taller related berm that would then bring it up further. I think there's issues with respect to the proposed screenings. And we've already discussed the decommissioned bond, so I will not take up any more of your time with that.
You're not taking up our time, I promise. Public comment helps, public comment helps guide our review. And none of us live across the street like you guys do, so we learn more based on that.
Thank you for coming out.
Would anyone else like to speak? A lot of people here. Nobody else wants to speak? It's okay. There'll be, there'll be more public hearings. We'll be in this mode for a while. You're allowed to speak in the future too. Thank you.
My name is Lorraine Bucelato. I live at 27 South Quaker Lane. I just bought my house in August. If I would have known that this was going in there, I would have never bought the house. From my understanding, as looking online, something like this in the area will drive our property value down anywhere between 3% and 10%. And I'm not sure about anybody else, but that's awful. This is my very first home. I have children that go to school here. I don't want this in front of our house. The house that we're in, it's older. It's a beautiful farmhouse that needs love, and that's what we're doing to it. We love the sound of the horses across the street. That was, that was the best thing I heard when we were walking in the house, looking to buy it. I'm afraid that with this noise, I won't hear those horses, and that's just absolutely heartbreaking. This is devastating. I mean, we're going to be able to see it all across the street, and there's nothing that we can do about it. That's terrible.
No, we're going to be requiring screening, and there will be trees. I need to make sure that's, and if anyone wants to speak, if you want to speak, please come up and speak through the microphone. But there will be trees as well as shrubs mixed in through there. Screening is required for multiple levels.
So from where our house is...
I haven't seen your house. I'll have to go and take a look. You're past Mr. Van Broekhaven.
Point on the map. Would that help the board to see?
We're right across from Lenny's Farm.
So you're, you're just south of Mr. Van Broekhaven's. You're the next house.
The very next house.
I know your house, okay.
So we'll be, that's like where the corner at the end of where the fencing is. We'll be able to see all of that, and that's not what we signed up for. If I would have known, I would have never bought the house, ever. And I can't see anybody else wanting to buy a house in that neighborhood if that goes out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out.
Anyone else like to speak? Come on up. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Hi, my name is Kathy Runner-Adams. I live at 17th South Quaker Lane. First, I'd like to say that we agree with both our Navies, Jody and Harvey. In addition to that, we own property in Queens, and we specifically bought our house in Hyde Park for a different type of life, to get away from the commercial life and, quite frankly, the beauty that surrounded South Quaker Lane. I agree with the woman who was just up here. Have we known that this was going to happen, we would have never purchased our house. Our biggest concern right now is the property values. I mean, we really, I mean, we have ties to the community, but even if we were to sell the house, we're concerned that our property value is going to go down as a result of the solar farm being built. And, you know, I understand, our, living in the city all our lives, that, you know, you can't stop progress. But I was, we were a little taken back as to why, out of all the land around us, that you, you know, the Hyde Park site was picked. You know, there are other places not too far away that we feel that would be a just place for this particular project. And that's all we'd have to say tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Adams. Anyone else? Come on up.
So I'll just tell you all, I am Mike Signan.
Come up to the microphone, please.
I'm just here to say that I am Mike Signan. I don't really have an opinion one way or the other right now because it's the first I've heard about all this. The land actually belongs to my sister and her husband. It is not under Signan Farms. Signan Farms is a corporation that I own that sells milk and ice cream. I just want that to be clear, all right? And in the meantime, I've not, I've not formed an opinion yet. This is the first I've got all this information and I'm listening, but I just want it to be clear, my name has been here for 50 years. 50 years. You can't go anyplace without knowing that name, and I'm not bragging about that. But it hurts me to see neighbors that are using, thinking it's me, and it's not me. It's just, I want it to be clear that it's not Signan Farms, that's all. I asked this gentleman this morning, this afternoon, to look into that, and he said he would do it. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? It's like I'm an auctioneer going, going. Okay, do you want to respond anything right now? Do you want to wait till you make a new submission?
I mean, I think that the only thing that we can say is, you know, I don't think that we intentionally tried to hide the fact that it's a horse farm. I believe we had mentioned it in earlier planning board meetings, and we can amend the FEAF accordingly.
The Act statement just says it being farmed. You may have not thought that it was farmed. Equine uses are part of agriculture. It's not technically farmed because you don't have arable land that you're producing crops. But it's just the way the Act statement's worded, but we know we'll need that corrected regardless.
There was no intent to, you know...
In your next submission, it would be helpful, and I've asked this of other applicants as well, for you to provide a narrative on your impact on agricultural soils and on farm uses in general, since you are in an ag district. So the continued viability of it as a horse farm, and, you know, what you're doing to protect any important or significant soils on the property.
And Michael, if I may, just a couple of, well, I guess what I'm hoping I'm going to suggest to the board is, to the extent possible, if the applicants can put together responses to any of the concerns, obviously, if there's any plan changes, that they could include that in sort of like a response document or narrative or something like that. Couple of things. I'm going to take another look at the glare report. And I'll ask around CPL and see if anybody has any special expertise regarding glare reports. The other thing is, I think we'll have to take another look at the type and location of screening, so we'll take a look at that. But just a couple of points from the beginning of the review by the planning board. Initially, I think some of the equipment was going to be located on the west, and we expressed some concerns about that. So it was moved to the center, the thought being that having the equipment nestled in there would make better sense. So that's something you can take a look at if, if there is a concern about noise, if that is something you would consider moving the equipment over to the east side. So I'll let you discuss that with the property owner and with, you know, whoever's involved in the design and the development. So that's just one thought. Those are my main points.
Thank you. I should add, the applicants are going to revise what you see right here. Ms. Crawford mentioned that earlier. That includes revision of the landscaping. We wanted to go ahead, before they revised, we wanted to hear public input in case that made further revisions go down the line. And I certainly heard that visual impacts are a primary concern, both for property, perhaps the impact on property values, as well as glare. In the glare analyses we've seen for other sites, there are, at some point, if you're standing in the right position, you can't avoid glare. It's sort of like if you're walking in a parking lot and you have parked cars, if you hit just right and see the sun flash on, say, the door handle, it's going to glare right into your eyes. In other words, it's impossible to not have glare at some point everywhere. It's minimizing the amount of glare that's, that's possible, that's there. And we have used screening, trees, et cetera, before to minimize it, also walls. In this case, I know what the neighbors are thinking, that all of them are on a rise. For there to be complete screening at the very beginning, you'd have to install trees that were about 20 to 30 feet tall, which would be cost prohibitive for this kind of project. Typically, we see landscaping that's proposed that will provide the screening as it continues over time to grow, both in height and in width. So what you see, in other words, for landscaping proposed there now, the azaleas are not going to be there. We've already discussed improving the landscaping, and we'll look for that submission when it comes in. If there's no other public comment tonight, can I get a motion to adjourn this to, is May 15th, sound right to you guys?
Yes.
Give you time?
No, I just wanted to close just to thank everyone for their comments. You know, we do appreciate them. And as always, the board, the town engineers and the town attorney, we, as always, appreciate your comments as well.
Yes, I want to say thank you also to the audience, or to the neighbors in the audience for coming out tonight. Everything you take will be taken very, you say will be taken seriously by both the applicant and by the board. And you're welcome to watch these meetings online as well. I shouldn't say to watch them online. They're televised on Channel 22. But they're also on the town website pretty much within a day. I believe you can go back and look at prior meetings. They're there.
Week.
A week?
It gets repeated though, isn't it?
Right, they're repeated. Well, if you have trouble going to sleep, you can watch our meetings at some point. They're all sterling, not quite as sterling as this, put it that way.
So if you're moving the panels, I'm interrupting, sorry. If, yeah, if you're moving everything down, do you need to redo that glare report now because it's all different elevations and different locations? So something to think about for your next submission, it should address that, whether the glare report will still be accurate based on your new layout?
Good point. I believe the original glare report was done for the initial layout, which was wider toward the north, not quite so deep. It's been narrowed and extended now toward the south. But where it was actually was on higher elevations back in the back when you first did the glare report, because the land goes up the further east you go, when we were there today. So you should take a look at how the changes will, will change, will make the glare different.
So, I mean, based on when their submission's going to be ready, I don't, I mean, if it's, the deadline's two weeks before the next meeting. I'm not sure June is enough time.
May 15th, you mean.
Or May. I'm not sure May is enough time.
Maybe the first meeting of June.
What's, what's your preference?
For the next meeting.
The next public hearing? The submission deadline for May 15th is May 1st, or April 30th, I guess.
Do you definitely want the next submission before the next public hearing?
I think that'd be beneficial.
Probably, yeah.
I mean, you can schedule a workshop with us without it being, I can set the public hearing for June, the first meeting in June. If you want to come and just workshop the changes, you can. All that would be different was the public can't speak, as you know. But they'll be able to speak at the next meeting after that.
Could we give you a, what do we prefer, and how do you schedule it at the next?
I have, we have to, we have to set it now.
Oh.
I'd say second, second meeting in June.
Second meeting in June or the first meeting in June? Remember, you have to get...
June 5th or June 19th?
Why don't you walk through, what are the submittal dates for June 1st?
What's the submittal date for the, the second May meeting?
The second May, April 30th.
In other words, 13 days.
And June 5th would be May 21st.
We do.
We don't have it yet.
All right, we'll do, we'll do...
I guess we could resubmit and see if there may going to be like kind of... I guess we could resubmit, and then is there a rate going to be like kind of icing on the top? That's my only concern is the survey right now.
We'll have to have it at some point, correct.
At some point.
Is that the wetland survey?
The, uh, what's that?
The survey of the property, or the...
The boundary survey.
The property.
Yeah. But we could resubmit with, you know, the revised screening and, you know, panels down to avoid the setback. We could address basically all of the survey.
May 21st is only four weeks.
So what's your preference for a date?
Is it the 15th or the 21st is the...
The, May 21st is the deadline for the June 5th.
For the June, for the June 5th meeting.
Yeah, we can do the first.
Okay, Megan, again, a motion to adjourn the public hearing to June 5th.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. And if you need anything in the meantime, like an offline meeting, just let us know, as always. Thank you.
Thank you.
Out of public hearing mode, the next item on the agenda is Dollar General. This is a new application. We workshopped it a month or so back, and the applicants listened to what we had to say and made major changes. I'm happy to see. So Ms. Majanowski, do you want to come on up? I hope I said that correctly again. I'm practicing. So this building is, this use, a new building is proposed at the corner of East Dorsey and Route 9G, also known as Violet Avenue in this area. This is a site of a former meeting hall for, not masons, I'm having a lodge, lodge?
Grange.
Grange, sorry, Grange. But it's already, we've already circulated and discovered that it doesn't have any value as an historic resource. Ms. Majanowski is going to walk us through everything again. Thank you. First, let me just say thank you for the additions of the sidewalk, the bench, everything, and for it being a very nice stick-built building.
Certainly, thank you. Again, for the record, I'm Karen Majanowski from Bowler Engineering, and I represent HSC Hyde Park LLC, who was the contract purchaser for the 1.78 acre parcel located at 1 East Dorsey Lane here in the town. We began this process with the planning board last month on March 6th and introduced the project. And as the chairman mentioned, since then, we've made a lot of progress with the project to develop a full site plan review application at this time. We've developed full site development plans, which we submitted to the town, and a full SLIP report, which included many modifications. We took the board's comments seriously, went back to the drawing board, and tried to address all of those comments to date in this submission. Just a couple high-level items. The project is a proposed 7,500 square foot Dollar General retail store located in the neighborhood business district, where it is in allowed use with site plan review, and we are proposing 27 parking spaces to accompany the store, which meets the zoning code. In developing those full site design plans, as you have probably noticed, we closed the access to Route 9G, which was a right-out only. There were concerns with cut-through traffic here, so we did remove that, and we kept our full access on East Dorsey Lane where it is today, and it is further from the intersection than it is today. We added proposed sidewalks. As you can see, this site has a lot of frontage, so there was a lot of sidewalks, but those are there now. And we've also added sidewalk connections from the store on both sides to both street frontages, and added a bench, as the board requested, along the sidewalk. We also have street trees and landscaping along the frontage, and we reviewed the intent of the code to have landscaping within the parking lot and discussed that with the board, and it was preferred to keep the landscaping along the edge perimeter of the parking lot, and we added foundation plantings out front as requested, and screening along the dumpster, which is located in that area, as you can see there. We also worked hard on our proposed signage. We submitted the monument sign cut sheet that is externally illuminated from the ground, and will have finishes that we're happy to discuss with the board to match the building. We also revised our lighting. The light poles are 16-foot height, and we submitted that lighting plan as well. As a reminder, our proposed elevations are there. We received positive feedback last month, so those haven't really changed. We did provide some additional information, but the building as it stands is there. So with that, I'll turn it over to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one quick note before I turn it over to our consultants or go to the consultants. The sidewalk, and I appreciate you putting it in there because I think this is a site that definitely requires it, I know there's a lot, but I believe that you're going to have to show connection to the crosswalk. Instead of just going around, you're going to need to show a connection to a crosswalk across Dorsey.
I think it's the old one, too, right?
In other words, you'll need to... If there's a sidewalk proposed, it's going to need to connect also to, it needs to go to the street, so people can cross the street. That'll be DOTs per their complete street requirements.
Okay.
They're going to make you not just go around, but also have a little piece, a spur that'll take you, so if you want to cross East Dorsey there, you can.
Okay.
Comments? Ms. Axelson?
Yes, so we took a look at this. There were some, some positive changes with the sidewalk, and I see some landscaping. So we did a thorough review, wanted to hear what the board had to say in this workshop tonight. One of the things that jumped right out at me, I, I do see that there's an attempt to close the driveway along Route 9G, but I feel like visually, it still looks like a through road, so what I'm going to recommend is that the guide rail be brought back to the 20-foot yard setback there, and some greenery be put in there, whether it's just lawn or more landscaping. We have concerns about the width of the driveway, and we understand that you will probably have concerns about a large truck being able to navigate the site. So one of the recommendations would be to have whatever remains of the western end of the driveway, once you pull it back inside the setback. One possibility would be to kind of tilt it so that it would be oriented a little more north, I believe, that that might be a more appropriate turning movement based on your loading and service area there. Thanks for the pointer, Michael.
Aim this this way?
Yep. So, so that was one of our thoughts. So we were questioning the width of the driveway through the site, and we're going to suggest that it be necked down to, say, 26 feet, or maybe 28 feet at the most. That kind of ties in with a concern about the zoning requirement to have 350 square feet per parking space and related aisle. So it'll help you bring down your impervious to narrow the driveway down, and also get you closer to that standard of 350 square feet per stall and aisle related to required parking spaces. So that's, that's that part of it. The landscaping looked decent. One of the things, and we, we do agree that it makes more sense to not break up a parking row and stick landscaping in the middle, that, that's fine. What we're hoping for is maybe in addition to the spirea to add in some shrubs, maybe some trees. And I know that we did find a couple of trees along the frontages, but technically, they're supposed to be street trees along both frontages, so I think the planning board would probably like to see quite a few more trees or something along the street. Appreciate all that sidewalk, that's a big expense, and glad to see the bench there. We were going to suggest one more bench. There's a sidewalk that leaves the, leaves the street and goes to the front entrance, and there's a little strip there. It would be probably nice to have a bench there if somebody's being picked up or whatever, or walks there. Those are the, those are the big ones. We, we'll have some comments on the lighting plan, just getting more clarity on it. We can see that there's, there's building-mounted lighting, it's just not really clear on the photometric plan, so we'll be specific on the lighting plan comments. And I did sit with the elevations, which are very attractive, trying to figure out which was which, because they're sort of front, rear.
Yes.
So one, so if you could label them more directionally, so that'll be another one of our comments. But the reason that I did that was, there are a couple of sides where there aren't quite as many features. And one of them is what's called the rear, which is basically kind of the southern one facing into the corner of the site. And, let's see, it's not that, keep going. It's, it's one of those, the one without the service door, the one on top.
Yes.
So one suggestion for that, I see that you've got the barn doors, and I see that you've got the shutters. One thing that was discussed at, at a meeting with a couple board members was the possibility of maybe putting a few windows up high to let in light into the building, but it, but it wouldn't interfere with your security issues. So that's something you can think about, and it was for that rear or southern-facing elevation, and also maybe the side with the service door, because that faces Route 9G. So those are some architectural thoughts. Those are my biggies I'm rambling, so I'm going to let Pete talk now.
Mr. Sotera?
Okay, just to follow up, Carol, on one of the things Liz had mentioned about the width of the aisle. We looked at the approved Dollar General site plan that this board approved, I don't know, two years ago, three years ago, just a little further, further north from this site on 9G. And we can send you a, a copy of that plan if you want, but the drive aisle for the, and it's basically the same, you know, layout here. The drive aisle for that was 24 feet, and, you know, the turnaround spot that Liz was talking about in terms of, instead of having that road go right straight through to angle it off towards where the, where the septic is, that's generally the same, the same concept as the other Dollar General that we approved. So we can send you a copy of that, you know, site plan. You know, my biggest concerns are traffic and drainage. I had some correspondence, I believe I forwarded some of my correspondence with the county department of public works, I forwarded some of that to the, to the planning board. And I know that your office has been in contact with them. And so I believe they were discussing it yesterday in a meeting. They had a whole bunch of things to go over, one of which, you know, was this project. But, you know, we're concerned with, and I know several members at the planning board are also, with St. Peter's School, which is right across, you know, the street. You know, we've got, you know, the early morning, you know, drop-off with parents, cars, you know, buses. We've got, you know, the departing traffic, same thing, parents liking buses. It's very, very like busy there. So we, we asked the DPW to make sure that in their evaluation of this, that they take into consideration, you know, the school. One thing that Steve Gill from the county had mentioned in an email back to me was about the possibility of a right turn into the site from Route 9G. And I thought that wasn't a bad idea. I happened to have a meeting this morning on another project with Chuck Walters from the Department of Transportation, and I mentioned that to him. And he said that he thinks that they would be open to that, but again, he would coordinate with you and also the county on that. So, you know, traffic is going to be something that we're going to have to look at, but more, you know, we're going to be relying on, you know, the county, because it's obviously their access road. The drainage, I believe at the last meeting, when I think it was Chris that was here, I think Chris had mentioned that, you guys had already done soil testing to...
Correct, yeah. Our, the geotechnical full testing and report on site is occurring next week, but our office went out and did infiltration testing just to get ahead of it and know what we're dealing with out there. So that's what the design was based off of.
Okay, so you did do some preliminary soil test to make sure that you, make sure that this thing was going to work.
Yes.
But next week, which is what our office is going to, you know, be there, that's the official testing?
That, we'll have deep tests as well.
Okay. All right. Because, you know, I just, I don't really know this area's having very good, you know, soils, but, you know, maybe it is. Usually infiltration basins are located in soils that are classified as an A or a B, and, you know, maybe this is fine, but I just, in all my years of working for the town and working in this area, seeing, you know, projects done and like excavated, we, we kind of know this area has not very good, you know, soils, but, you know, we'll have to see. I am really concerned with the, the discharge point, the overflow spillway. And in one, in, you know, our comment letter, we're going to ask you to, and I think it's going to be difficult, but we're going to ask you to look at an alternative that would not have a direct point discharge overflow right directly onto the neighbor's, you know, property. Now, I understand that based upon the contours, that that's generally where the site flows to today, but I just have a fear that, you know, depending on how the soil tests work out, that over time, if this basin isn't properly maintained, that infiltration rates decrease, and it fills up faster, there's a potential for more overflow, that's going to be a point-like discharge right smack into somebody's, you know, yard. And, you know, I have an issue with that, honestly. So we're going to ask you to look at if there's some alternative for the overflow, whether it's possible to tie it into the state storm drainage system. So, but we'll put that in our letter. So those are my major...
Before I go into Victoria, just a point. When you forwarded me the idea of doing the right turn in, that made sense, because if you're northbound and all the traffic has to go here, this can back up very easily.
Right, exactly.
Whereas if you have two points of entry, but it's still only one point of exit, I think it's easier to maintain. I think it's probably easier for customers to not have to be forced right into the left. Because I know, since they put in that light, I can't think of the name of the street, but it's, it runs in the Marist, they add a light where you take a left now to go into the Staples, they're not Staples anymore, Fulton, that's it. I've seen that, when people take a right, then to take a left to go to Starbucks or Home Depot or whatever, that backs up all the way around the corner. So, and I know why they put it in, but it still made it, that's why I started thinking about it in this, even if there's no light there, you would have backup. So that does make sense. And I'll just say Karen Majanowski, there we are. Question. We walked the site today as well, the three of us, after walking the Lumen site. There's a swale right here that's pretty deep. There, I assume there's going to be regrading extensive in through here, because there's also right now a berm in through here, that, maybe a raised bed septic?
That's, you know, I was thinking that, and it's funny that you went there today, because I stopped there, too.
Well, you go by there all the time.
In, you know, my travels. And, you know, that, that bermed area is, you know, the raised, you know, septic.
It's a raised bed septic, okay.
So usually the only time you put in a raised bed septic system is if you have, you know, a groundwater issue, or, you know, the soils are really bad and you got to build up. So that's why I have my doubts about the infiltration for the stormwater.
Also, the site right now, there's a parked vehicle about here, and there's some sort of fenced-in playground. That is on your, that's on this site, right?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Where, you know, the camper is, I think it's like...
Yes, there's a camper there, it looks like, okay, just wanted to make sure.
And a little garden, right?
Yes, and a little garden in through there, too. Okay. Ms. Palero?
So, we're going to issue a letter.
Thank you, Pete. Ms. Palero, comments?
So, as proposed, there are still a number of waivers or relaxation of standards that would need to be required by the planning board. But really, the biggest issue still is that you're going to be asking for a very large variance. And you weren't here at the last meeting, but we advised you that you couldn't count any of the existing square footage as grandfathered, but the chart that you gave us still is counting it towards, towards an existing scale. In this district, the, the scale is 7,500 square feet, and you've used it all for the building, which I think, I didn't do the calculation, but it looks like it's about 80% variance that you're going to be asking for. So I recommend that the planning board get to the point of issuing a seeker determination, but then not getting into that real nitty-gritty detail review until after they obtain a variance, because if they don't get the variance, that will stop the... because if they don't get the variance, that will stop the project.
Gotcha. I was gonna raise that issue procedurally, that's, Victoria made that recommendation, I was gonna see what you wanted to do, because we could continue doing a granular review at that point while you pursue it, it would make the ultimate, ultimately make it faster, but that's, you're going at your own risk, is what we're going to say.
Right, we're, I would defer to the planning board on that, and, and what your feelings are, because it is a significant variance, and we can remove that 50% from the table so that it reaches 7,500, and then we're proposing the 12,360, counting the building and the parking. So, I do hope we can move forward with seeker this evening, and if you think we need to continue to move forward here, I'll certainly listen to the planning board on that. We would like to get a read on the zoning board, and I don't know what your thoughts are on that variance, if it's something they've granted before, but I would like to get a comfort level on the variance.
What I think you might, what I can ask the board to comment on as we go forward, including tonight if they're comfortable, would be to say, because they would ask us for a recommendation about this size variance, and they're not required to follow our guidance, believe me, they don't sometimes, but I think a positive recommendation usually would ring well with them.
So, I mean, I will say, the zoning board has denied a variance for a proposal in the same district that was of a similar size. But on some developed sites where there's an existing structure that's being reused, it's a different situation, but because they're knocking it down and starting fresh, I don't think it's something the zoning board has dealt with in a very long time.
Correct.
Except for that one denial.
Correct. So, in your application, you would be looking at the current scale in terms of what the expansion is as well, meaning what the size of the building is, and, because there's a lot of associated parking right now with that site, but it's not paved. There's a just sign that says, additional parking in the field behind, and there's no grass, so apparently people, there's a sports, some kind of sports use there, training, I think. So, and there were, when we were there, there were at least six, seven cars, I counted, so apparently there's times when it's more actively used. The actual, the parking area, I think, that they're utilizing would be here, so I would take a look at, if that's used for parking, I would take a look at what, I would add that into the scale that's there currently, because I think the ZBA will be looking at, at this kind of variance, changes to the character, and so if there's already, if it already exceeds 7,500 and being used, then that should count toward your argument.
Right, I agree.
I'm leading you, I'm supposed to, I'm not supposed to, according to our attorney, sorry, I just realized. It's a, it's a bad habit, sorry. But that's what I would look at if I were you, put it that way. Other comments, Ms. Paladaro?
That's it for now.
Let me start to my left, Ms. Weiser.
Hi, how are you?
How are you?
This is, pass these around.
Should each take one?
Each take one. And Cynthia?
Thank you.
Three for you and one for Carol.
Very nice.
Is there one from Ms. Maginowski?
Yes. So, I'm talking about the elevations. I really appreciate your taking another step with the elevations, and I think they are a wonderful improvement. I especially applaud your desire to adapt the design of the building so that it seems it more of a natural fit within the neighborhood, as if it were originally a residential home then retrofitted for commercial use. While there seems to be a nod to a number of architectural designs here, I think the building will be more of a success if you stick to the dominant influence, which appears to take on a crafts, takes, which appears to be a take on craftsmen, with its low-pitched gabled roof and a wide unenclosed overhanging eve. Although the gable cornice returns are prevalent in so many styles other than craftsmen, including Federal, Georgian, Colonial Revival, and especially Prairie, they don't seem to be at odds with this building. I do appreciate your intention to articulate the broad expense between gables, however, the addition of the barn doors as another architectural influence wholly unrelated to craftsmen. Instead, I recommend you adding architectural flourishes that are related to the craftsman style. Please see examples, one and two, of the craftsmen garage doors, that would serve the same purpose as the barn doors, but feel more in line with the architectural direction the building is headed. Regarding the entrance, regarding the entrance here, you could treat the porch, treat the porch and its solid enclosure, it says it's very solid enclosure here, more like an open porch with a column or pier porch supports with sloping sides. Example three, was you could use, rather than have the enclosed porch, see how it's completely enclosed, you could use these craftsmen-style, what are they?
Columns?
Columns, or.
And bases?
Pier porch supports with sloping sides.
Right.
So, that's example three. Again, rather than keeping it completely enclosed here, I recommend opening it up and making it more of a porch style. Regarding the faux shutters, take a look at the lower window treatment in garage example four, that would be this, this lower window treatment here. If you were to place these windows toward the top of that area, just under the gooseneck lights beneath the gables, you might allow, allow for some more light, natural light into the building. So that could happen here, here, and all, and all the sides, if you were to keep those, these types of windows under there, you could add some natural light, they'll be so high, it'll, it won't have any problem with your, with safety or security, but you could, yeah, these types up here. So, again, just to avoid this faux.
We, we can look at that, but since it's a retail store, the way it's, the shelving is and things on the walls.
You go to the top?
I would have to confirm if there was room for windows.
This is hoping you don't go to the top.
Yeah, the way they fixture the store is.
They go, yeah, if you don't go to the top, I mean, again, you could probably black them out, so they still will have a better craftsmen architectural appearance, and, because the shutters and the barn doors just don't lend it, but you could, if you black them out, that would be fine, but again, it'd be nice to have some natural light in there. So, and the last photo I've included is an example of the many waves craftsmen flourishes can enhance your type of architecture. So, for your architects, like, it's just, there's just a lot of beautiful things you can do with craftsmen to make your building much more attractive. So I think these suggestions will approve the appearance of the building and boost the curb appeal, which also translates to a successful business. Thank you.
Wow, how many hours did you spend?
A lot.
I have to say, when I, when we saw the building initially at the last meeting, we all were like, wow, that looks great. I didn't notice at the time, until I got the actual submission, that these are like faux barn doors, and I was thinking, there's gotta be some, this is not an area that needs that sort of barn look, plus, I agree with Ann that it is mostly craftsmen in style, and I think opening up this area with columns there and then open to the side would be both more attractive and welcoming. I like your returns, though, that you have up on through there. In other words, I think what Ann suggested is basically tweaking.
Mm-hmm, tweaking.
To make it, sort of make one architectural statement, rather than a few, few going on at the same time.
Yeah, I think the, and it'll serve the same purpose as your barn doors, this type of.
I agree.
And look ever so much better.
And look ever so much better. Ms. Wasser, comments?
No, I really appreciate the work you did on that, very helpful, thanks. I have some questions, so, a little bit around operations. In the environmental assessment form, it says you plan to be open 24 hours a day?
Yes, the reason that's in there is, we do not know the tenant's store hours yet, they are not set, so while they may or may not operate 24 hours, I'm not sure if I've seen a Dollar General that does, it's just hard to specifically say what time they will open and close.
Okay, well, obviously, abutting a residential neighborhood, it just adds more concerns to noise and night lighting, so that was one of the questions. I also was curious, does a Dollar General at 1049 Violet Avenue now, do you know what the company's plans are for that location, which is not so far away?
I do not, I'm not involved in that store.
Okay, I'd be interested to know what, what, what the plan is for that, if they're gonna have two Dollar Generals that close together.
That very well could be the plan, they, they tend to go within five or 10 miles of each other, because they are such a small store, and this store is actually smaller than that one, this is only 7,500 square feet, typically they're 9,100, but.
Yeah, the other 7,500 too, we looked.
Okay, okay.
They both can be the same size.
Okay. Yeah, typically they're 9,100, this is the smallest store that they have.
Well, whether it's 91 or 7,500, I'm not a fan of having, you know, so many multiple boxes so, close together, but I, I feel, I feel like we're, Dollar General's ubiquitous, so, which is not a bad thing, because I know it's a popular store, but I, I'd like to know what, what the plan is there. I had a comment about the labeling of the elevations, and I think, I think that was it. Thank you very much.
Just a note, at the last meeting, I myself raised the issue that if this is 24/7, that because deliveries, and their residential uses, they're adjacent, we need to restrict the hours for deliveries, that's what we typically do when someone says it'll be open all night, and it's not always the case, but you're going for the worst case by saying that. Stop &amp; Shop, for example, is 24/7, but it's not 24/7 open to the public, they just accept deliveries during the night and freshen up the place, but you can't shop after midnight, the doors are locked, so that may be the same thing they do here, depending, although Stop &amp; Shop's a lot bigger store than this one is, as you pointed out, it's only 7,500 square feet. Ms. Dexter, comments?
I also appreciate the sheer amount of work that it must have taken to incorporate all of our comments from the last time. I wanted to talk about the possible northbound entrance, as you're heading up 9G. I would only be in favor of that if it were notched so that it truly was, you could only take a right turn in, and that around town, there have been attempts to make right-hand turn-only's in, and the only successful one I've, actually, it's only, it's an exit-out, is of the old Stop &amp; Shop. Otherwise, they try to pork chop things, they try to do things, and people don't care, it's wide enough that they can just, they would be able to exit out. So I would only be in favor of it if it was banked, so that it is so obvious, and there's concrete in the way, you couldn't physically do it without riding on top of the curb.
Sure.
So, that's the only way I would be in favor of a northbound entrance, but I think that would actually be very helpful, and cut down on congestion coming in off of 9G onto East Dorsey Lane. There was some discussion, Pete, you were talking about the maximum width of the East Dorsey entrance, and how it affects the calculations for parking, or was that, Liz?
She said the width of the drive aisle, and how it affects.
Were we talking about the entranceway, though?
Kind of, all related, so.
Right.
The code has a specific requirement to kind of keep parking areas not so massive.
Right.
And, so, you're allowed your typical stall width, which is nine by 18, 162 square feet, and then you're allowed the rest of up to 35, 350 square feet of both the parking stall and the aisle.
So like the backup, right, yeah.
Per required parking space.
Okay.
And this, this definitely exceeds that.
Okay, but were you talking about the actual entrance, the width of the, of the entrance?
I was also talking about the width of the entrance, because there's kind of an overall concern about, obviously, stormwater runoff, an impervious area, and it just struck me that I've never seen a driveway that wide on any application that we've looked at.
And how wide is it?
It's 30 at some points, 32 at other points, and as, as we said before, we pulled out the Dollar General application, and that's 26 feet. Typically, driveway width is 24 to 26 feet, and the way we were looking at this, it appeared that for the truck maneuvering, they might need a little extra bit of width, or that sort of turned out thing at the end. So the concern was, can't we neck this thing down a little bit, so it's not such a grand width of pavement in the middle of the site?
Right, okay.
It just gives the site a whole different look, and I.
No, I understand, and so the reason why I'm talking about this is because I do drive by the other Dollar General every day, and one of the things I've noticed is that the entrance to that is actually fairly narrow, and, and there are issues. People take very sloppy turns, and they don't pull all the way over to the right-hand side to make a right turn, they kinda go to the center, and, which makes people having to stop out on the road to allow them to get out. I've noticed with all these narrow entrances, that there's a lot, it actually has caused a lot of conflict. I noticed it at the Deerview Deli, at the, at that gas station there, all the time, people are always having to stop on the road because someone is in a very wide truck anyway, and they.
Are these new driveways?
Yes, yes, these are the newer driveways, because they, they have been notching them down. So, I would like to try to find a happy medium, 32 sounds like it's way too big, but 24 sounds way too small.
Well, another way of handling it would be to have a wider, a wider, you know, more width near the entrance, and then neck it down in the middle.
Right, so that's, I think, where I was going, is that if we're gonna notch anything down, I would prefer not to see it at the entrance.
Okay.
Because that is a, it's kinda like a country road there, and people, people just take big turns, you know, they don't, they don't take nice, short, little, compact turns. So I wanna prevent as much conflict at that entranceway as possible.
Right.
So I think, okay.
Okay, so we can look at that, go ahead.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, knowing all these different calculations, if they can keep that open, but maybe close something else out, that would be great. And then, the thing about the raised mound, because I, every time I drive by there, and I've been staring at that site now, like, wow, that is a funky-looking mound, and to, and to know that it's a raised sewer or septic, I, I think you're gonna definitely have to, it, it does say to me that the ground underneath is not suitable, so, just, you're gonna have to take all that into consideration.
Sure, we did initial percolation testing as well, which had good results, but again.
Did you do it on the mound?
No.
Oh, okay.
We did it where the septic is proposed, but again, we're doing that additional testing next week, just to be sure. I mean, this is probably the best time to do it, and the worst time.
Yep.
That's why it's the best time, it's the worst time, yes.
And then I had a question for you, because we had talked about those sidewalks going around the edge there, of where 9G meets East Dorsey. How do you do that with the, with the rise of the land there, because that's like solid rock, or almost solid rock, right?
Yeah, and that's another thing we're gonna explore with the testing on site, is where is that rock, and how far down on this hill can we actually cut?
Okay.
But that is the plan.
Oh, okay, okay. But otherwise, I'm really impressed with the amount of work that you've done to get this back before us, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
So, if you're able to make a decent cut on the site, is your intent to take that knob on the southwest corner out?
Yes.
Okay. And thank you for all your changes and listening to us, and hopefully we can get that north entry in there, I think that, that'll help out, and other than that, I have nothing else to add, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Ms. Denapoli?
I'll take up some of your time, sir. I want to, I already commended Ms. Weiser on her diligence and hard work, and I truly appreciate what she did, and I think those changes, if you could incorporate them, will make a Dollar General really stand out fabulously for Hyde Park, and like a few of the other buildings in our area, other people are gonna be coming to Hyde Park to copy your design. That being said, I do have a couple of questions, or comments, I should say. I concur with my colleagues that the, if you do do the Route 9G entrance, I would keep it only as a right-hand turn, and when we were there today, are you going, you're gonna have to regrade, because that is some incline at that area where they were talking, where you would be making the entrance.
That's correct.
On, so you'll be regrading.
Yes.
But then that led me to another question about it becoming a swamp right there, because when you came in, it, it was really kinda shallow, and you could just see where the water could pool, and I gather that's what Pete, you were referring to?
Yeah.
Or, and, and, you know, I'm, I'm asking questions like, okay, can we do drainage someplace, and, and there's, and that is a very difficult spot, and I commend you for trying to resolve all those issues. I will also go back and ask if a traffic study, once certain things go along, if a traffic study would be advised.
They'll ask for one, the county will ask for one.
Will ask for one, okay.
So we would need that for seeker?
I will need that, yeah.
And then, just a few minor points, I think Liz might have mentioned this, I'm not sure, but by the front entrance, if there could be a bench near there, along with a wastepaper basket, so as people are coming in and out.
Like right here, maybe?
Yeah, and then.
And then we added the, the trash receptacle is right here.
It's right there, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. And is there an overhang by the exit? Is there an overhang?
Which, at the front doors?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's where they wanna put the, instead of putting the solid wall there, that's where they wanna put the host.
Under the sign.
Under the sign, all right. I think those are all my comments and questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
No.
I still have more to go?
So, I'm going to echo my colleagues, that I think that the.
So I'm going to echo my colleagues that I think that the northbound right turn in only on 9G does make sense. I'd like, I hope you pursue that with DOT, if it's going to mitigate potential traffic impacts. And that's, I think, something that would weigh into the DCDP, Dutch County Public Works Department's comments about the entrance. I had the same question when we visited the site today about the grading, but now that I realize that you're gonna try to remove the knob of rock in the southwest corner, that makes more sense, you could use that for fill, to fill another areas, et cetera, if you regrade. Also, I think I heard someone, I've forgotten to say who, it might have just been Liz, but I think you should add more trees along both frontages. This is required in 108-4.5E, oh, 1B2. With any core business district, vegetated bevers and tree should be provided within the walkway that is part of the street providing furniture for any lot developed in the provisions of this chapter in the following section three. The development of any use that increases the area occupied by buildings and impervious surfaces by more than 1,500 square feet, which this does, shall provide trees along the entire frontage applicable lot as specified above. Just adding a few more trees will harmonize the site, that's all, and I think it's that big a deal. Pete's gonna examine the stormwater infiltration systems. I want to echo what most of my colleagues said, too. I believe that Ms. Weiser did a Herculean job of finding some small details that could, if added... Herculean, yes, could make a big difference on the site. And I don't think they're that big because you're not changing the footprint at all. You're just keeping it to what it is and adding some changes. One of the things that, so right now, it's, the building is shown in the current elevations, but if you're gonna regrade, then this would actually go lower, I believe, right? You're gonna remove the rock?
Right, so the grading plan shows that the grade is a little bit higher still in proposed conditions, so the building will sit a little bit lower than that intersection?
You're gonna change it so it's more gradual, is that what?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure that I understood that clearly. I'm not the best at reading grading plans, I will fully grant. I know the zoning, but not always the grading. Other than that, that's basically it. Changing, by the way, I was, the more I looked at it, again, we had, right here in the middle of town, once Mavis went up, the site owners, because we all praised it as being fairly unique from Mavis, they were like, good. So then they showed us the next three buildings, all had barn doors and cupolas. And it's like, we don't want to create a farm in the center of town. We want to create, you know, an area that looks like it's maybe its history and its heritage. And I think that's what you're getting there here. I just don't get the barn doors necessarily reflect that style. They could be changed out as well, that would certainly make me happier. Other than that...
Can I say one more?
Yes, please.
So I understand that the right turn-in thing looks more attractive now, and I understand the traffic mitigating the effect of that. But I guess I still have the concern about how on-site we can sort of slow down the impulse to drive through the site. That would be my concern, because this is supposed to be pedestrian-oriented. You've got people crossing a parking lot. And so if you can think about that in terms of, you know, what can be done inside the site to deal with that issue? Because the other entrance is gonna be too way.
Yeah.
I can, I can speak to that a little. And I did talk to Steve Gill at DPW this week, so I was aware that he was gonna make the comment that he did not want all access on East Dorsey Lane. I agree, I think a right in only from Violet Avenue is the solution, and we're okay with that. Because by that point, you've gone through the intersection. So you're not cutting through anything, you're already through. If the board still, or DPW or DOT still has a concern at that point with cut-through, we can do signs or speed bumps, something to mitigate that.
If you have, if it's angled correctly, I don't think you're gonna have an issue with that, honestly, that's what...
That was my point, if it's notched in, then you can't.
And then the traffic coming north to south on Violet Ave, there's, the way the striping is, it prohibits a left turn anyway.
Yep.
So I think that's a good idea, though, for the right in, and we're okay with that. As far as angling, the other drive towards the septic system, I'm just not sure I want to compromise that area. We've pulled the septic as far away from our neighbor as we could due to their neighboring septic and well. So I would hate to push that closer, just to have the pavement.
Which you have the right turn-in only, if you designed it that way, I think that's gonna change. That will mitigate down some of what you're gonna have in terms of Liz's concerns and our concerns about that as well.
I don't know if it will because of the truck. Because we eliminated the right out, the truck can't exit there and it certainly can't back onto the road.
No.
So it needs that area to pull forward and back in. You had a lot of space, though, for the truck to back out.
Yeah, we'll send you, we'll send you a copy of the site plan from up here that we approved. I mean, just like, look at it, and then we can go from there. I think we've got a lot of other things to overcome.
Now, before we go tonight, I want to discuss the potential traffic impact study DOT, DCDPW will require this, you're thinking? Traffic impact study?
I, I, well, I'm 99.9% sure that they will require a traffic study. I mean, because it's gonna involve turning, like movements, they're gonna want to see, you know, queuing to see if there's gonna be any impact, that, you know, the light. I mean, I can verify it, but I'm 99.9%.
No, I mean, I just, if that's the case, traffic impact studies are not cheap. And I want to make sure that they understand what the scope would be for the traffic impact study itself.
I can check with Steve and to ask him that. And also, assuming that they are going to require it, that we get input as to, you know, the scope of it, how's that?
Correct.
I'll do that tomorrow.
One of the things that, we're waiting to circulate for Seeker based on the comment that we heard earlier this week about the right turn-in only. I'd rather not circulate with this layout and let you have a chance to do one more tweak to it. And then as soon as you get that to us, I'd recommend that we go ahead and start circulation. That way, and if you can verify that the TIS will be required.
Yeah, I get in touch with them tomorrow. I just, I'm sorry, we're done.
No, no, I was also gonna say, DOT has told me several times, not always consistently, that they control a certain amount of distance from, on any road, whether it's town or county, if it intersects state highways. So we might want to get DOT's, I believe it's...
I mean, I think, I mean, it's so close, I'm sure, and again, I can ask Steve, but I'm sure that he'll, he'll coordinate with, you know, the state because the state is, the state is in charge of the signal, so.
Speaking of DOT, are those sidewalks in the right-of-way or on the, within the property? They're on the edge of the right-of-way, so they are in the right-of-way and they touch the property line.
They're right on it.
That's the better way to do it.
Yes, DOT and sidewalks have been an issue lately. We're not gonna go into, yes, in this neighborhood, but we're not gonna go into that right now. So when you get a chance to make some revisions based on what you heard tonight, then just let us know, we can schedule this again and then get you going for Seeker.
Sure, I mean, as far as, if the only issue with Seeker is the right-in only, we can do that immediately.
Very quickly?
Yeah. Well, I mean, the board has to do a full Seeker review, and actually, the drainage is gonna be important as well.
In this one, because it may change, it may actually change the layout.
You're gonna, you're gonna do the, you're gonna do the soil testing on Tuesday, I believe, right?
It is, it's going to be Wednesday now, yes.
Wednesday, okay. We just need to, well, we can do that offline, but make sure that, you know, we know the time so I can make sure that I have somebody there.
Sure.
Who's done this before. If I could just ask one, I'm sorry, Michael.
No, go ahead.
When you, you said you did some preliminary soil testing before that, when was that done? Was it done in the fall, last fall, or?
I'll have to check the exact date. I think it was more heading into winter, because we didn't really get started on this project from a design perspective.
I'm sorry.
Until, within the last few months.
Do you remember if that included deep tests also?
It did not.
Okay.
Yeah, we just went out, our office, and did those initial tests, the infiltration testing to get an idea and then to get us through winter, and then now we're ready to move forward.
Because, I mean, last, you know, last fall would have been a good time, you know, to do that because with, you know, the wet, you know, season we had last summer and into, you know, the fall, I would think that the groundwater would have been at its highest, you know.
We're supposed to have four days of rain starting tonight.
And it's pretty wet right now.
And it's, when we walk the Lumen's side, it's squishy right now just because there's been so much...
Bellefield site, Tad and I, we're out there today, and boy, it's looking, you know, dry, Kansas-y almost.
Really?
I mentioned to them today, Kansas, and they, they like that today. They had a water truck out there, too, to keep, you know, the dust down, but anyways, so... So we'll coordinate as far as, you know, Wednesday goes, so.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
So just contact us when you're ready to make the next submission. I guess they will schedule it, because I think we're ready for Seeker circulation, Liz?
We were, right, once the new plans come in, did you give them your comment letter yet?
No, we wanted to hear input for tonight, from tonight, and, okay, you go.
I was gonna say, Liz will issue another comment letter, they can make those changes, and then we'll be ready to send a new set of plans out.
The next little, yes, thank you, that's, yeah, I wasn't ready for this one to go, so.
And I have to, I just want to thank your client. She was looking skeptical at one point during the meeting last time, and I thought, well, we've laid it on too heavy, they're gonna run away. But they're still interested in investing in the community, we appreciate that.
Certainly, thank you.
I mean that sincerely.
No, we're excited about it.
I understand why some individuals might have concerns that there's gonna be two Dollar Generals so close to one another. But we also have two CVSs in this town, and both of them seem to be thriving, and they're, they're not as far apart as these two are. They each seem to have their own clientele, so, not sure how that happened, but it did. And I'm sure they're looking to consolidate at some point because they'd like to have, neither one has a drive-through, that's what most pharmacies like. But at any rate, I appreciate you being so responsive, and please communicate that to Ms., hold on, Ms. Madison?
I will, thank you.
Thank you.
As far as the Zoning Board of Appeals, is it safe to say we should hold on meeting with them at this point until Seeker is further along? I think you should go and present your application, but then I would hold off on proceeding until you have a, the Seeker determination, because they won't be able to do anything.
And I'll just go ahead and say out on a limb that, given the way that you, the way you responded to our comments by incorporating the changes, I myself personally would be comfortable making a recommendation to grant the variance. Again, I'm using my own knowledge of the site and the fact that while the building that's existing there is somewhat smaller, there's a pretty, I'll just go ahead and say it, a pretty hideous addition that was put on, I think in the 70s, in the back, that does, that kind of ruined the whole building's shape itself, and I think that there's a...
I just caution you to hold off your opinion until you hear about the drainage. The site may not be able to support...
The drainage is something entirely different. If they can't support that, then there's no reason to make that recommendation.
Right, but I mean, the scale is about the intensive use of the site. And if the scale is reduced, then the drainage impacts may be reduced as well.
Well, true.
So I don't know if the board has enough information at this point to make a recommendation.
Let me just say, as I said, I'm not making a recommendation, but I would be in favor generally given the aesthetics of the site and what they're proposing. But you're right, drainage is going to be important here. That's, we had another application for Quick Check, I think we told you, way back when. And there wasn't, the swell couldn't bear the drainage that's required to be apart from the building from the area where the cars sit for DEC, and so they had to abandon. And this would have been a great site for that because you could have the building in the front and the gas, the fueling pumps in the rear, because they're both evident from both sides because of it being the corner property. But that was stopped by, again, the swell quality, so we'll know more after next week, apparently.
That's right, and there's, I mean, we've, we know that was a concern going into this, so that's why we wanted to vet it upfront and make sure that it's on the table. And I think there's things we can look at doing further since the concern is still there, making the level spreader wider. We can design the basin so that it holds a 100-year storm if it weren't to infiltrate right away, so that it detains it, that's there. I think we're pretty close with the sizing that we have now to be able to do that. So I think we can work through all that and work through this camp.
Letting it be a dry pond area, that's what you're talking about.
It's proposed to infiltrate into the ground, but we could design it so that it can hold the 100-year storm without infiltrating first, so it's holding it back.
And just a quick comment, sorry, on the variances, that I think it would be scale and the issue with the parking stalls.
Yes.
Yes, both.
So the parking stalls, that one wouldn't be a relaxation? I have to look at what section of the code it's in.
It's in 108.
I think we talked about relaxing that, the front door.
It's not, I believe it's in the schedule of bulk regulation.
If it's 4.5, then it's a design standard, which can be modified.
Which can be modified.
Okay.
It's not in the bulk, the bulk?
I don't, I don't know off the top of my head where it is, so.
I can find it, but...
And I can't read my own.
I think we, I think we can do this offline, though, as well, and can we get it back to you, it'll save time for tonight? You're driving back to Albany, I think, right?
Yes.
Yes, you might want to get home earlier rather than later. So we'll get back with you on the information for the parking stalls, but I'm pretty sure it's a standard that we can, we can relax as opposed to getting a variance for it.
Okay.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
And again, please thank your client, and we look forward to hearing from you again. We've been up here this two hours, can we take a five-minute break?
Sure. Five-minute break?
No, I need water.
Nougat?
Yes, I need some water.
I know. I know.
I'll give it a whirl.
Thank you.
It's like a Milky Way, right? Milky Way.
It's hot.
Yeah.
A little too weird than what's in the...
But it doesn't stick your teeth.
Oh, take it.
That's okay.
No, thank you, that was perfect, just the, just the... A flip that I wanted.
Here's an extra one.
I think I, yeah, I think I heard you ask my, where did you open it?
So I didn't want to encounter much overhead for an idea, I have no idea.
Right, if it's good, yeah.
So to maintain minimal risk. I cleaned out my office at the landscape shop.
Oh.
And it's like a 12-by-15 roof. So I do most of my work from my laptop at home now. And convert that.
Oh, Karen? Oh, Carol, got it. All right, I'm gonna send...
They were, they were, it was...
I'm gonna send up, just to make sure that...
I would, I love it.
These people work for you or the people are ready to soil it out? I'm gonna send up soil testing protocol from the DCS, just to make sure we're all on the same page.
No, it's not difficult.
It won't be difficult, no.
You're gonna get a lot of impact.
All right, just want to make sure we're on the same page. Okay, very good, thanks.
Remember, all the towns around us want the Hyde Park Dunkin' Donuts.
Very nice.
Stick under standard, and now they're asking for the Hyde, that's where the Hyde Park made us now, too. Okay, we ready?
Somebody made us here, I need to do it. Which one do I go to?
Let's get this kid a pool. Let's get him a pool. Somebody want a pool?
I didn't know we were ready.
Yeah, and you don't even have to say anything.
I don't?
No.
I don't even have to say who I am and where I live?
You don't?
And who we are?
You don't?
I'm Kim Kenez, I live at 10B Dart, and this is who? Maddie Kenez.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Maddie Kenez, hi.
How do you live in Hyde Park?
We have been there, it'll be three years on June 24th.
Live in a very nice neighborhood.
I love my neighborhood, and I love my house, I'm very comfortable there, I do, I love it.
Do you know why it's called Be Dart?
I do.
Be in art.
Be in art, I do know. I actually found that out from the pharmacist at CVS. He told me, because he used to live on that street.
The supervisor of our town lives on Be Dart as well, that's where she lives in Be in Art's house.
I do not know my neighbors, I have to say. I only know Gary next to me and Nicole and Robert next to him, but I'm, it's taking me a while.
It's a friendly town, I promise, you can meet everybody over there. I know...
We're still adjusting.
I think I know most of them.
And my kids still go to the local schools, so that's been a challenge. Yes, we want to put in an in-ground pool. I think I had written my letter.
And we have a recommendation, so we have a recommendation from the zoning administrator. In addition, the reason why you have to go before us is because you're in a state...
Historic overlay district.
Historic overlay district, it's the SAS, it's the statewide area, scenic area, statewide significance, but you're not visible from the river or from either one of the historic sites. So who has this resolution?
I do.
I do. Jules and Kimberly can. Site plan waiver, town code section 108-9.4C2, April 17, 2019. Resolution 2019-13, whereas therefore be resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the building permit received by the Building Department, April 2, 2019, and per the request to the Planning Board dated December 5, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Would you like a copy of the resolution?
Yes, please.
There you go. Good luck getting started. You're gonna have fun this summer.
In time for summer.
Maddie, you're gonna enjoy it?
Maybe by the end of June. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for waiting so long. You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Wait, I have to sign this when it's done, when we both. The next item on the agenda is the enclave at Hyde Park. There's Ms. Patty. Anything you want to say?
Back again.
Anything you want to say?
They're home with my husband.
I was like, Nicole, you don't have to stay. And she's like, no, no, I'm good.
It's quiet.
I'm fine.
And plus, I like to be available to answer any questions or concerns that the board may have.
Why, thank you.
Anybody have any questions of Ms. Patty?
No.
No.
It's just a few things that are dragging on with the...
Yeah, I think we're pretty much there. We have everybody sign off. I heard today that we're coordinating executed documents to come back to the town for the supervisor's signature and then will be filed with the county. It's just getting this final extension, final.
There is some strong language between Mr. Alexander and Mr. Raplansky. Basically, that there were too many emails going back and forth. Shocking, shocking.
Right.
But it got resolved because...
I mean, in all fairness, it has been difficult between...we've had a large number of projects that have had a lot of conditions and the emails are just getting lost. So we're talking about in the future, having hard copy submissions of everything with a cover letter. Because even in email, they often get missed. Right. And so we're...something we're gonna work on for future submissions.
For procedure or policy that we're gonna make sure. Because we're very fortunate to have as many projects as we have in Hyde Park. I want to make sure I...everybody understands that. We're very, very fortunate. We're very happy. But when everyone wants to get everything done quickly and we have somewhat of a bewildering array of projects, it becomes, I know, even I, it took me three days to get caught up on emails because I try to go through everything, but it takes a while. I'm not paid to have another client. I just wait for the town so I could do it. But I think I'd scream in frustration if I were someone else, but we bet that worked out now. So this should be...this is the last one we can grant?
Yes.
So who has this resolution?
I do. Resolution granting extension of the time to satisfy the conditions of the site plan and special use permit approval. The enclave formerly known as The Meadows, two-family homes, membership club, phase 4B of membership club and residential phases 1 through 25. Resolution number 16-49M, whereas times 10. Now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby grants the applicant a second 90-day extension of time in which to satisfy the conditions of the site plan and special use permit approval to and including August 5, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carries unanimously?
All right.
Thanks for waiting.
Thank you.
And I...it's...just so you know, there was a meeting, I believe, with Cynthia, Victoria, Pete and Liz, where they all just sat down and tried to go through four different projects to see what was outstanding, et cetera. And it did help things move along.
It did. It was very helpful.
So at any rate, look forward to seeing it. I look forward to signing this shortly.
Yes, yes.
That's great.
And now they're forced to go home.
Nicole?
It's okay. I think by now, hopefully, they're sleeping.
I haven't been to the site lately. How's the preliminary work on the clubhouse, et cetera, going?
Well, the clubhouse, the standalone site plan for that is incorporated into this site plan set, so we haven't started that yet.
So you're just doing the model?
Model home.
How's that going?
It was temporarily shut down for winter, so we were, you know, doing monthly sweeps. And now that it's spring again, I'm just waiting to hear back from the client when they anticipate starting full construction on that building again. But it should be wrapped up relatively quickly. And once we get the site plan signed, we'll start moving forward with building permits and all the other...
Wow.
Great. Good to hear. Thank you.
Accessory buildings on site.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, we have two resolutions relating to the Inn at Bellfield. One, we are amending the resolution for site plan approval. Ms. Ventalas here. Would you like to walk us through what we're going to do tonight or why you requested it?
I guess I could say it in three letters, D O T. Do I need to say more?
Say no more.
No, that's basically it. DOT is allowing the temporary access or work for the temporary access for the wastewater treatment facility. But given how complicated the entrance will be at the main entrance, including the dedicated right turn-in-only, et cetera, they're not going to give a temporary permit. So what they've requested is that they be able to use Dorsey Lane as a construction access point. And it's noted in through the resolution, as well as discussions we've had, that ultimately, this is going to be a regular road that anybody can travel through. The applicants have proposed that until they have more development, that this would just be for emergency purposes. Once the hotel is up and running, you want to use the main entrance. But at some point, it'll be that way. So we had a meeting that was offline, but Superintendent of Highways was here. And he agreed to basically the proposal that Ms. Vental outlined. And that is, that's contained in the resolution here, but there's going to be meetings to assess the current condition.
Document it.
Document it, and then at the end of the construction phase, if there's any problems, there's more, there's increased damage, the applicants will be required to get it back to the condition it is today. That's a quick summary of what's going on.
That's a change from the version that you saw. I don't know if you've seen the new one. It's within 30 days, they want those meetings to happen and the bond to be posted. Because...so just timing-wise, it's a timing issue now. Even if, once they start construction of the Route 9 intersection, it's going to take so many months that if you don't start the hotel in the interim, it'll take, you know, eight months for the intersection and then another eight months for the hotel after that. So this way, they can go simultaneously.
Wait a minute, are you saying there's a change in the...
Yes, there's a change in the...
Since I saw it?
Yes.
Could I see a copy?
So because the applicant has indicated in the offline meeting that they don't intend to apply for a building permit until August, but possibly January 2020.
This is for the hotel building permit?
This is for the hotel construction. The use of West Dorsey Lane is ongoing in the interim. And so the condition has been amended to say that within 30 days of the date of this resolution, the applicant and the town engineer have to go out and create a report on the condition of the road and post a bond so that it can continue to be used in the interim, just because there could be a long delay between now and the building permit.
Okay, that's fine.
And that's what...this was from the Highway Superintendent, too, who wanted to say, let's get these things started. What if it takes...what if they don't apply till January and there's more damage? It's like, okay, we can help you with that.
That makes perfect sense.
We can help you with that.
That makes perfect sense.
So anybody have any other questions from Ms. Vental? From Ms. Paudaro? I'm gonna read this one myself. Resolution to amend the conditions of site plan approval in Inn at Bellfield, April 17, 2019. Resolution 201Z-04G. Whereas whereas, be it further resolved that condition 3 under the third resolved clause is hereby amended to read as follows, 3 deleted. Be it further resolved that the new fourth, fifth and sixth resolved clauses are added after the third resolved clause, to read as follows. Be it further resolved that prior to the authorization of a building permit for a wastewater treatment plant by the zoning administrator, the applicant shall provide the zoning administrator with an NYSDOT perm 33 for temporary construction access for the northerly Route 9 entrance drive. Be it further resolved that within 30 days after the date of adoption of this resolution, the following conditions shall be satisfied and no building permit for the hotel may be issued until such conditions are satisfied. One, a site meeting shall be held between the applicant and its contractors with the town engineer, highway superintendent, zoning administrator, any planning board members who wish to attend to visually inspect and photograph that section of West Dorsey Lane from US Route 9 to the W D C A or West Dorsey Construction Access, approximately 400 feet east of the intersection with US Route 9 to document the existing conditions of that section of West Dorsey Lane. Two, approval by the town engineer, highway superintendent and zoning administrator of an existing conditions report documenting the existing conditions on West Dorsey Lane with photos in a narrative. Three, approval by the town board for performance guarantee, in amount approved by the town engineer and planning board and informed substance and manner of execution, acceptable to the town attorney, to secure the obligation to repair all damage to West Dorsey Lane as a result of the usage of West Dorsey Lane for construction of the project. The performance guarantee shall not be released until the highway superintendent and town engineer have advised that any required repairs to West Dorsey Lane have been completed after the cessation of the use of the W D C A. Be it further resolved that following general conditions apply to the use of West Dorsey Lane for construction of the hotel. One, there shall be no deliveries from the east and the applicant shall advise all contractors, subcontractors, vendors and agents to approach the W D C A from Route 9. Two, the applicant shall post and maintain a sign at the exit from the W D C A to West Dorsey Lane indicating no left turn onto West Dorsey Lane, eastbound from the construction entrance. Three, there shall be no stockpiling materials for the hotel until a building permit is issued for the hotel. Four, there shall be no further improvements to the W D C A, including removal of vegetation, rock, earth, et cetera, except as indicated on the approved site plan. Five, the use of the W D C A is limited to construction of the project only and construction of any future phases or subphases from the property from Route 9 or as otherwise approved by the planning board. Six, the applicant and its contractors shall keep the entrance to West Dorsey Lane from the site clean and free of dirt and dust at all times. Seven, the W D C A shall be closed each night at the conclusion of work with a gate. Eight, all applicable terms and conditions to the site plan approval shall continue to apply to usage of the W D C A with regards to maintenance and inspection, SWIP inspections, compliance, safety and signage. Nine, the applicant and its contractors shall be available to meet with the town highway superintendent, town engineer and town zoning administrator within 24 hours notice to respond to any complaints or concerns. Ten, during the period of usage of the W D C A, the applicant shall provide monthly written memos to the town engineer and town highway superintendent with copy to the zoning administrator and planning board on the progress being made in the southerly Route 9 access and shall report to the planning board if requested report on the progress obtaining the highway access permit for the southerly Route 9 entrance, including the Route 9 access improvements. Eleven, use of the W D C A shall cease within one year of issuance of the building permit for the hotel. Eleven, after cessation of the W D C A, the applicant shall schedule a meeting to assess the post-construction condition of West Dorsey Lane from Route 9 to the W D C A, using the same procedures as the pre-construction inspection. A post-inspection report shall be prepared by the applicant submitted to the town engineer and highway superintendent for review, comment and approval. Thirteen, once accepted by the town engineer and highway superintendent, all required improvements shall be completed within six months, weather permitting, and no more than a year from the date of approval of the post-inspection report. Be it further resolved that condition 4 under the seventh resolved clause is amended to read as follows. Received by the zoning administrator of NYSDOT approval of completed Route 9 improvements for the northern and southern entrance drives and in accordance with the approved road profiles. Be it further resolved that under condition 5, under the seventh resolved clause is added to read as follows. Five, approval by the town engineer and zoning administrator of an as-built plan for the site including infrastructure and volume calculations for the stormwater management detention facilities. Be it further resolved that annotated version of the resolution of approval is attached heretofore reference only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You could rediscover this for Big Pharma.
That's from my early high school debate years. And we also have the second resolution, which will amend the subdivision resolution. I don't have that one because it's short.
I do.
Thank you.
Resolution to amend condition of final plot approval regarding issuance of building permit in Inn at Bellfield subdivision, April 17, 2019. Resolution number 2018-11D, whereas times 4. Now therefore be resolved that the last condition in resolution number 2018-11A is hereby amended to read as follows. Be it further resolved that no building permits for lots 2 and 3 may be authorized by the zoning administrator unless the access road providing access to the lot proposed for the development has been completed up to a binder course in accordance with the road profile standards set forth in the ODA approval or otherwise suitably improved to the satisfaction of the building inspector and fire departments.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Good to see you as always.
Thank you very much.
Sorry you had to wait through all this tonight.
No problem at all, and we appreciate your cooperation as always. And Pete, Larry will give you a call tomorrow because this is a lot for us to get done in 30 days. We're willing to do it, but we have to have the meeting.
Yep.
Get the report, have you approve the report, have you set the bond amount, have us get the bond amount, have it get it before the town board to have a meeting. So we'll do everything in good faith and get that done, but it's... It is a lot to get done. I just want to say that.
We'll get it done.
I know we will.
It will happen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the signage for Sideburn's Barber Shop. Everyone had a chance to take a look at it?
Yes.
Yep.
It has design unity. It's a nice-looking sign.
Yes.
And the owner of the site was here earlier today. I got to tell him that our liaison, Councilman Krepnik, is actually a customer there. He squinted and said, yeah. At any rate...
And here to model for us.
He actually...I just want to also add that he told me that the planning board is doing a great job around town and that he liked the fact that we asked for the bench to be at it because he said people sit on it all the time, and I've seen it. I also complimented him because when you go by the site, the big window, when you can see it too, it looks great. It just looks great. It's perfectly small town to have a barber shop plugging away like that. Who has this resolution?
I do. Resolution recommendation for issuance of assigned permit pursuant to town code section 108-24.3A4D. Hyde Park, Town Center North Building 4, Sideburn's Barber Shop wall sign, 4272-4288, Albany Post Road, parcel number 65-04-933017, April 17, 2019. Resolution 2019-14. Now there...whereas, now therefore be it resolved, the board hereby recommends the zoning administrator issue the signed permit for Sideburn's shop, barber shop.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just want to point out that the title of the resolution was longer than what you had to read inside the resolution. So the last item on the...well, the...a close to last item on the agenda would be an application for a site plan waiver for the installation of an oil tank at 5155 River Road. So we have the recommendation from the zoning administrator, and this is also not visible from the river. Ms. Wasser?
Okay. Martha Ingraham, 515 River Road. Site plan waiver, town code section 108-9.4C2. Whereas, a request for site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Martha Ingraham for a new above-ground oil tank on a new concrete pad associated with a single-family home, requiring a building permit. And whereas times 5, therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the building permit received by the Building Department, April 11, 2019, and per the request to the Planning Board dated April 15, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And everyone had a chance to read the letter that I wrote, based on...
Yes, yes.
Our comments for the Renaissance Rehabilitation sign.
Yes.
Ain't a motion authorizing me to send it then?
So moved.
Definitely.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I had a message from Nancy Forrest that Glovey signs, stated call her. I'm not sure that it...I'm wondering if that's stated the sign for Renaissance Rehabilitation. I guess I'll find out tomorrow when I make the return of the phone call.
Oh, right.
And that's it for the agenda tonight. Making a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Cynthia has one more item on the agenda. Consider interviewing and contracting environmental consulting.
Oh, I heard...I had that added, sorry. It's on my version.
So when we had reviewed Athanas, East and West, we talked about potentially hiring a wetland biologist.
Oh, right, yes.
So we had three names recommended. Per my recollection, and Cynthia verified this from the notes, from her minutes, we offered the applicant the option of revising the layout substantially so as to avoid the wetlands completely and the adjacent area for the stream. Remember, we did not know that there was a stream running through it at the time because they hadn't pointed that out. We found it out later on, and our code requires no disturbance in that area. So they have not responded yet, but in the interim, Victoria thought that it might be useful if we start...we set up an interview. Spider Barber is not the same barber that we had. It's not the same. This is a different one. Liz is nodding her head. So the suggestions were Mr. Bagden, Mr. Barber and Mr. Kiviat. So would you guys like...we've used Eric Kiviat in the past. It's Liz's recommendation that we use...
I'm just gonna hire an environmental person named Spider.
We used Spider Barber before.
Yes, we have.
We have, but this is a different... Yes.
Evandible Gardens.
Did you say Mark Bagden? Bagden is the partner.
Yes, I know that now. I said that was initially a suggestion, so...
And I like him, nice guy.
Very, very. Would you guys be interested in interviewing, or should we just wait and appoint one or the other? What would you like to do?
Good question, because I...I mean, the name on there that I know and trust is Eric Kiviat. I mean, he's...he's wrote the book on most of this stuff, literally. I mean, he's, he's wrote a book on most of this stuff, literally.
He has.
But I don't know the other names.
It's, can you tell Bruce Barber?
Yeah, Bruce is the...
Microphone?
No, it's not. First, although Spider Barber is B-A-R-B.
Microphone?
Spider Barber is B-A-R-B-O-U-R.
Oh.
Okay, so Bruce Barber I worked with down in Kent. He's been an environmental consultant for probably 30 years, I think, and he does all aspects of environmental review, and one of his specialties is habitat assessment and wetland delineation. He deals in Kent where they have the whole east of Hudson requirement where if you disturb 5,000 square feet or more. Anyway, he's worked with the Kent Planning Board for years. I don't know the other people, you know, the other clients that he has. Most of the work that he does is municipal, though.
And do you know the other two?
Well, Mr. Bagden, the name was put forth, but he works, he doesn't, we wouldn't be hiring him for this particular project, and the...
I know of Eric Kiviat.
Dr. Kiviat is, he's at Bard, and we've hired him before to do habitat and wetland assessment as well, so it's just...
This is not a forte of mine, so me personally interviewing, I wouldn't even know what questions to ask. So, I would defer to people with more knowledge on this one.
Anne, do you have any comments?
I think it sounds like we have positive recommendations for both, both Mr. Barber and Mr. Kiviat. I guess I would just ask that we verify that Mr. Kiviat is still doing this?
He's still there.
Yes, he is.
Who knows that? And I don't know what his availability is either.
Right, right.
One may not be available for a variety of reasons.
Right. So, I mean, I personally would not have to interview Mr. Kiviat.
No, we don't.
So, you know, it seems like we have two great recommendations. It seems like whoever, whichever one's available.
Okay.
That makes it easy.
Yeah, because it sounds like they're both above par.
No, so, we'll make a motion to start the interviews and then you can hire whichever one you want.
Interview, which, it's just we haven't worked with Mr. Barber before, that's all.
Okay.
So, make it a motion to, to interview Mr. Barber.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And if anybody wants to join in this, I'll try to, we should do this in the evening, like we've done before.
Sure.
We'll do the traffic consultant.
Yeah.
So, I'll pick out...
I'll make myself available.
Great, and then I'll just communicate to the board when he's available.
Possibly for Athanas East.
Also, real quickly, we, you received a copy of a potential scoping document for a traffic impact study for the, my brain just went, the Seventh Day Advent, can't victory leg, I couldn't think of the name of it, sorry. So, we would normally hire a traffic consultant. In this instance, because we've used AKRF. In this instance, Anthony Russo, in this instance, CPL, our planning and engineering consultants have traffic, so their query was whether that he should respond and keep it in-house, and I'm fine with that. The rest of the board?
I guess.
Makes it easier.
Okay.
But do we need a separate escrow account for the traffic consultant from you?
I don't know.
We have an engineering and a planning. Do you need a traffic?
It's part of the same firm.
It is part of the same firm.
So, I don't know what difference it makes.
It would go under planner is what I'm trying to say, rather than engineer.
Well, it's an engineer.
It's an engineer?
Isn't it Traffic Engineer?
Then it goes under engineering.
She's P-E-P-T-O-E.
I'm just making sure that, I'd rather stop the issues that we may have internally with the, with the Controller's Office to make sure that, because for audit purposes, it needs to be billed accordingly, so if it's an engineer, then engineering. Okay, so you may need to make sure...
So, I'll email forward the scope out, or do you need to do anything else? I'll double check.
Double check with her.
Yep, I will. No?
This is a new experience?
I pull in this company, so there's a few I haven't worked with.
Okay.
I mean, that was the first one, that was west. So, I mean, I had just asked Cynthia, I know that we had talked about hiring a consultant on Athanas West, but I thought that similar issues were raised on East, and I know, or Cream Street, one of them...
Only a small, there's a teeny tiny portion of East, there's a little corner that shows it going into a wetland.
Mm-hmm.
But when we walked the site, the site's dry, it's because it's periodic inundation, so, and it's just a small corner. But East and Cream Street, we didn't have those issues with. Cream Street has no wetlands up there.
I thought it was just for West.
It was just West.
Okay.
That's what I thought, but it's way too decent.
And West really needs it.
Well, right, West, West.
West is a problem.
West definitely needs it.
West was wet.
So, we'll wait to hear, we'll, we'll interview Mr. Barber, but we'll wait to hear from the applicants as well.
And lastly, the telecommunications tower. You had looked for an RF consultant?
So, the board hasn't heard this yet?
No.
Ms. Moss and I had a meeting with Verizon, well, shouldn't say Verizon Wireless, with representatives of the company that would build a tower. They're going to be submitting, they were coming in to see if the application was complete, and when I saw it, it's a 189-foot tower.
How tall?
189 feet.
Don't get me started.
It's 19 stories.
Don't get me started.
Wait, wait, just...
Don't get me started.
That's a lot.
Just, hold on. So, the location is, I believe, 113 South Quaker Lane. This is actually a private road, Monica's Way or something, Melanie's Way, and you would take that, which is its own parcel, and then it subdivides two sites or two land parcels that are owned by the same organization, and so, and it's actually up on a hill. Now, as part of their application, and I have a copy of it, some has been submitted formally yet, they have an engineer's report that shows you why it has to be that tall, and it basically, if I can use some traffic impact state terms, it's the lower you go, the less, the more loss of service there'd be, the lower LOS. I said to the applicants, I, we can't, there's nobody on the board who knows how to evaluate this. I said, so the one thing I can tell you is we're gonna have to hire a consultant. They were, that's okay. So, I asked Pete, because I think this is gonna be coming in quickly, to find, Pete and Liz, to find someone who does this, and they found someone up in Germantown, maybe?
In Rochester.
Rochester.
My part, well, my partner, my former, former partner, Ray Jokowski is, he has cell tower application in one of his towns up in Columbia County, and the town attorney in that town had recommended this particular RF, RF consultant who happens to be out of the Rochester area, and again, there, it's hard to find somebody who will mainly represent municipalities because mostly RF engineers are working for the company. So, anyway, so, I think I circulated, I think I did, I circulated the guy's resume and some other materials to Michael and Victoria.
It's super impressive resume. I will say this, his hourly rate is high, it's 400 an hour, if I recall correctly.
Eh, 375, but who's really counting?
Rounding up. And to drive, I believe it's 175 an hour.
Well, yeah, yeah.
The thing is, is that I'm not sure he has to drive here. What we really do is sit in the report.
It's just an idea.
And then he'd evaluate it for correctness and give us back a written narrative, so...
I wrote down, I have to go and reach out to him, you know, tomorrow to, you know, to gauge, gauge his interest. I did send an email around to all the principals in CPL to see if they've ever come across this, and I didn't get anything, so I'm hoping this guy's gonna be, you know, willing to do it, which I think he will be.
His resume was definitely not just incredible and impressive, but it was also very persuasive about the way he looks at projects and his viewpoint from them, both from the municipality and from the other side. He's an attorney but does not practice law.
He made that very clear.
Made that very clear, so there would be no internal client communications, et cetera. But I think he sounds good. I'll, I'll circulate the resume to the rest of you, or Cynthia can, but it's...
I'm gonna email him tomorrow to see about his interest or, or call one or the other.
Can you, if you can copy, or if you email him, just copy us.
Sure.
So, that's another one coming down the pike. And by the way, it's a lattice, like the Eiffel Tower sort of style, it's not a single monopole, so there'll be a lot for us to evaluate. Obviously, this is gonna be, there's some skepticism being suggested over there.
Is this, is this one of the new ones that has all the little teeny...
No, she gets like...
No. The 5G ones, we actually have already done here. That was the one in the rise of the building.
Yep.
They're short, they're really meant for small urban areas where it's compact. This is, I mean, I drive quicker late all the time, my cell phones are dropped, my cell calls are dropped all the time.
Right. There's lots of dead zones around.
More or less, there's dead zones also in Greenfields, which is the nearest neighborhood this is by, so according to the study, if you go shorter, it actually hurts Greenfields, which, again, I can't evaluate this because it's so close by, I'm like, why? But anyway, I think it actually would help the Greenfields neighbors because some of them, if they want to go just cell phone and no landline.
Sure.
They'd be able to utilize that like so many people do these days, so these are just things that are coming down the pike.
So, I mean, we could be proactive, the board could vote tonight to require a $5,000 escrow for an RF consultant, should the application be submitted, based on the pre-application discussion?
I think that you're, you're suggesting that.
Well, I mean, just, just to keep things moving.
Make, make a motion to require $5,000 in escrow for an RF consultant, should an application be made for a 179-foot cell phone tower, cell tower.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, good.
Anything else snuck in on the agenda that I didn't know about? Or told you and forgot, told you and forgot?
Right in front of you. Yeah, we're good.
Okay. We get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, all.
Good night.
I'm gonna get an email.
Don't miss it.
Larry.
We're gonna do it.